Good evening, everybody. I want to welcome, and good evening to you, too. I wanted to welcome everyone to a special joint meeting of the City Council and Hayward Redevelopment Successor Agency Board. Today is April 15, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting into order. And if I could ask Councilmember Bonilla to lead us in the Pledge Allegiance. Absolutely. Please stand if you're able.
(inaudible)
Madam City Clerk, if you can please take the role.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, good evening. Councilmember Andrews.
Present.
Councilmember Bonilla Jr.
Present.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Present.
Councilmember Roach. I understand she's running a few minutes late. Councilmember Cyrus.
Present.
Councilmember Sermenyo. Mayor Salinas.
Present. Thank you. Moving on to, we have a special presentation this evening. This is Annual National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And I know we have the police chief here. Do we have anyone else from the dispatcher? Dispatches here. Thank you. Let's give our dispatcher a big round of applause, you know. If I can have Councilmember Bonilla hold that up. And then I'll read the proclamation and then we'll take a picture up here. And then if you have a few words, you can always deliver those if you want. Okay, proclamation. Whereas emergencies that require police, fire, or emergency medical services can occur anytime. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the immediate response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life preservation, life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from residents who telephone the Hayward 911 Communication Center. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contacts our residents have with emergency services in times of distress. And whereas public safety telecommunications provide information to and ensure the safety of our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio. Whereas the members of the Hayward, whereas the members of the Hayward 911 Communication Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their jobs. And whereas the, whereas the city of Hayward owes a debt of gratitude to the dedicated men and women of the Hayward Police Department 911 Communication Center, who dedicate their lives to answering calls from residents experiencing intense personal crises and during community-wide disasters, and who serve as the main points of contact for those persons seeking relief during an emergency. Now, therefore, I, Mark Salinas, Mayor of the City of Hayward, do hereby proclaim the week of April 13 through the 19th, 2025, as National Public Safety Communications Week. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give our dispatchers a great big round of applause. This is where we break Instagram, right here. There you go. You hold it.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. There you go. Perfect. And if you wanted, you can say a few words.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you very much. This is an honor to be here. I just want to recognize our Emergency Dispatch Center. We have the best of the best 24/7. Our team is on duty here to help the citizens of Hayward when they have an emergency or a crisis. And I'm very proud of our team and the amazing work that they do every single day, and you should all be proud, too. So, thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you. Also, I wanted to, I wanted to acknowledge a special student today. Her name is Giselle Sanchez, who is an intern for the City Clerk's Office, and she's from the Rising Leaders Program. Where's Giselle at? Is she here?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. She's actually on her way here.
Oh, she's...
She couldn't find parking, so...
Oh, she's parking. Okay, good. All right. Well, she comes from the Rising Leaders Program. And when, when she comes into the room, I'll do this whole bit all over again to make sure she hears it. But she's, you know, she's a young student who's trying to get her way into local government. And so, it's always good to see students starting young and early. So, good. Save your applause. We'll applause her when she gets in. Okay. Let's see. Next is public comment. Next is public comment, and this is reserved for people who would like to make a comment on something on the agenda or not on the agenda. I do have, one, two, three, four. I have six comment cards, and let me see if there's anybody online. Okay. I will start with, let me start with online. Is it Ariana Castellanos?
Is this the time to comment on the consent or anything on the agenda?
If it is something on the consent calendar, I will ask for public comment on, on the consent calendar when that comes. So, if you want to wait, you can wait.
I'm hoping to comment on something on the work session agenda. Should I wait or do I comment now?
Yes. Why don't you wait, and then I'll, I'll call back.
Okay, don't worry. Thanks for checking.
Yeah, absolutely. Next speaker is Elizabeth Lanton.
Thank you. It's interesting being on this side. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers and City Manager Alvarez. I'm Elizabeth Lanton. As most of you know, I'm a senior planner here in the Development Services Department. I wanted to come to public comment tonight to tell you that I've been with the city for almost seven years now, and I've really enjoyed my time working here. A major reason for that is that I've always felt that the city has valued me not only for the services that I provide for our community, but also as a whole person with a life and responsibilities outside of my job. Specifically, this was demonstrated when, following the COVID pandemic, when it was time for our temporary work flexibility to end. The city progressively decided to establish a permanent hybrid work policy with options for remote work. In the Development Services Department where I work, many of us were able to benefit from this hybrid work schedule, and this has led to better work-life balance. It's boosted our employee morale, and while still allowing us to fully cover our permit center, our general inquiry boxes, and our e-permits portal, which is open 24/7. For me personally, I, being able to work from home for part of the week has cut my commute time. I live in Richmond, so that's 10-plus hours a week if I was coming in every day, down to four to six, depending on the week. It's also allowed me to use my lunch break to walk my dog or handle chores at home, things that would normally fall to a weekend activity, so then when I am here, I can be fully rested, present, and able to serve our community. So, as a, as a result, I was disheartened to receive an email from the city manager yesterday directing all staff to come back into the office full-time. The decision was made without consulting staff, and from the email that was sent, it's unclear why this significant policy change is necessary, and moreover, why a one-size-fits-all approach is appropriate. Hayward's decision to entirely eliminate remote work also goes beyond what many other Alameda County jurisdictions are doing, and even what, beyond what the state is requiring. So, Dr. Alvarez, you've told us on numerous occasions that you are driven by data and that you welcome feedback and collaboration. Staff would be happy to provide you with data demonstrating our effectiveness in serving the community when working from home. We also would be happy to partner with you to identify areas where we could improve our service and develop tailored strategies for doing so. But in order to do that, we need to be invited to the table. We all have a shared goal here, to provide the Hayward community with the best service possible, and there's no reason why this needs to be at odds with the city allowing for work-life balance for its employees. So, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today.
And I have to apologize. If I'm looking down, it's because I'm taking notes. So, please. Next speaker is Rick Rivera.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager Alvarez. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here this evening. First, I wanted to make a quick announcement that, beginning on May 12, the Hayward-operated paratransit program will be doing a soft launch for our wheelchair-accessible-vehicle service, as well as our companion-ride service for people who need help getting to and from their home. This is a service funded entirely by Measure BD, which was approved by Alameda County voters in 2014. So, I would like to thank all of you, as well as the entire Hayward community, for making it possible to provide this service to our older adults and people with disabilities. My name is Rick Rivera. I am an analyst with the Community Services Division. I would also like to take a moment to address data. This is what I do. I'm an analyst. I analyze. Despite the ongoing debate regarding the end of hybrid and remote work, there is remarkably little hard data. Very little does not mean none. In issue 630 of the peer-reviewed journal Nature, published on June 12, 2024, Nicholas Bloom of Stanford University, Ro Binghan of the Chinese University of Hong Kong, and James Liang of Peking University published the results of a six-month randomized control trial of 1,612 employees at a firm with a market cap of $20 billion. Randomized control trials, as you know, are the gold standard of experimentation and very rare in the social sciences. I would like to share these results with the council. The experimental group, which was provided a hybrid work schedule, experienced the following: a 33% reduction in overall attrition; a 40% reduction in attrition for non-management employees. The non-management employees were a sample size of 1,217, by the way; a 52% reduction in quit rates for employees with a 45-minute or longer commute each way; a 54% reduction in attrition for female employees. And while I do not have hard data on this, having been at City Hall for nearly six years, I can say that that does represent a significant portion of those of us who are here working. The data showed no significant difference in productivity between the control group and the experimental group. The data found a statistically significant improvement in manager perception of hybrid work for a largely negative prior perception to the experiment. Now, I did find one benefit to all work in office. In a survey of 1,500 CEOs, 25% did say that they would be utilizing that to reduce their overall personnel costs by motivating attrition. Thank you very much for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Next speaker is, and forgive me if I mispronounce this, is it Kowalski?
That was fine, Mr. Mayor.
I only see you walking in on City Hall.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and my colleagues up on the fourth floor of City Hall. I've worked as a planner for various cities for my entire career. It's 25 years now, and I've never had to stand before a council in this type of situation before. It's unfortunate, but I felt strongly, I feel strongly enough about it that I felt like I needed to say a few things tonight. As civil servants, it's our job to provide our customers with the information they're looking for, to answer their questions, and to get them on their way. That's the most important thing, not making sure there's a but in every chair in every cubicle at City Hall five days a week, eight hours a day. I don't disagree that City Hall should be open five days a week to the public, and that every department should have representatives there to assist customers who do take the time to come in. That's how a good government agency is supposed to operate. But it's simply not necessary to have every single employee be at City Hall every day. We've proven that over the last five years. Let each department come up with its own plan to make sure it has some people here every day. Don't just take a heavy-handed approach and apply a new, and what's going to be a highly unpopular blanket policy across the entire organization. If the public is complaining about customer service, if the city's residents, business owners, and development community are telling you all that they're not getting good customer service from us, then that's a different story. And if they're complaining about one or two departments here at City Hall in particular, then those departments need to be held accountable and come up with a solution to make those complaints stop. But if, but if it is just one or two departments, then don't punish every other department for their poor performance. If you do, and you force these new workplace rules upon us that are being discussed, there will be many disgruntled employees in those cubicles at City Hall, and some of them will no doubt leave the first chance they get. And that's only going to hurt the city and have a negative impact on the level of customer service that we're able to provide. Happy employees. I'll end this, I'll end with this. Happy employees typically make for good employees, and vice versa. And that's all I wanted to say tonight, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is, and thank you for helping me pronounce it. Is it Saatchi Ko? Thank you for that. If you can hit the button on the microphone, we can, so we can hear you. Thank you.
Is that better? Good evening, Mayor Salinas, councilmembers, and city staff members. Thank you for your time and your service to our community. My name is Saatchi Ko Riddle, and I'm an assistant planner in the Development Services Department. Back there is my husband and my one-and-a-half-year-old son, Cyrus. We were lucky that tonight's meeting was at 5:30 because it gave them enough time to be here before his 7:00 PM bedtime. On the days that I commute into the office, I get an hour and a half with him in the evening. That's why I have an adjusted schedule to take a shorter lunch, so I can leave a little bit earlier. My manager, Jeremy, supported that because he understood how important even that small window of time is. I'm so grateful he took my situation into consideration. The flexibility, along with the option to work from home a couple days a weeks, is what made it possible for me to accept this position. I took a pay cut to join the City of Hayward because I believe in the mission and because I knew I could make it work for my family. It made Hayward stand out as an employer of choice. Working remotely a few days a week doesn't make me less committed. It makes this work sustainable. It's what allows me to show up fully, not just as a mother, but as a dedicated employee. I love my job. I enjoy being in the office the three days a week that I'm here. I take pride in providing excellent customer service, growing in my role, and contributing to the future of this city. The option to work from home doesn't take away from that. It helps make it possible. On remote days, I can take Cyrus to the park after work. We can eat dinner together as a family. I can show up for my nephew's baseball games and support my parents. I get to be the planner I want to be, and the mother, wife, daughter, sister, aunt, and friend I want to be. But if work-life balance is taken away, and I'm forced to choose where to devote my energy, I will always choose my family. I understand Dr. Alvarez and some councilmembers have had some concerns about service levels. If there are areas for improvement, I believe that there is a thoughtful and collaborative way to address them. That begins with open communication, clearly identifying concerns, and giving departments the opportunity to respond with solutions. Unfortunately, many of us have felt left out of that conversation. Instead of being engaged as partners, it has often felt that decisions are being made about us and not with us. I'm here because I care deeply about this work. If it were just a job, I would find another one, but I believe in what we do. From helping someone navigate ADU development standards to sheaping policies that make Hayward more accessible and business-friendly, a call to service should not be a call to sacrifice. We deserve the work-life balance that allows us to continue showing up, not just today, but for the entirety of our careers. At the March 20 All Staff Meeting, Dr. Alvarez said that she is our champion, not for us as individuals, but for the service we provide. I am asking you to be our champion as individuals because we are the service. The two cannot be separated. Thank you so much for your time.
Our next speaker is Colin Patterson?
Yep. Great. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, city staff. My name is Colin Patterson, and I work in the Transportation Division of Public Works as an associate transportation planner. And I'm here tonight to speak on the recent decision to eliminate our hybrid work schedule and require all staff to return to the office five days a week. Now, I might not have the data that Rick had or the experience that Steve had here at the city, but I've been here for almost a year and a half, and I'd like to say that one of the reasons I did want to come on was I really appreciated the option of a hybrid work schedule and being able to just have a little bit more flexibility in my life. This change will have a significant negative impact on our work-life balance, mental health, and overall well-being. I have nearly an hour-long commute each way, and this adds stress, reduces my productivity, and cuts deeply into the time I have outside of work to take care of my physical and mental health. Outside of my professional role here at the city, I'm also a professional cyclist. Having the ability to have flexible work from home has allowed me to train consistently, stay healthy, and maintain the energy I bring into my job. Losing that flexibility makes it much harder to pursue something that's incredibly meaningful to me, something that helps me show up as my best self for this organization and for the community we serve. More broadly, this shift moves us backwards. We're in a competitive job market, and rigid in-office requirements makes the city a less attractive employer, especially to candidates who value flexibility and balance. I want to acknowledge that not all positions here at the city have the option to work remotely due to the nature of the roles, and I deeply respect the essential in-person workers that do this every day. But that reality shouldn't prevent the city from offering flexibility to those of us who work, whose work can be done effectively from home. It was disappointing to learn about this decision without any input from, without any input from staff. I urge the city to reconsider this decision and engage staff in a conversation about what a sustainable, effective, effective hybrid work policy could look like. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Ms. Leah Schmidt. The closer.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Salinas, members of the City Council. Like Elizabeth, it's so strange to, this is what it feels like. Good evening, staff. Thank you for being here, everybody. I'm here also to provide my perspective on the blanket elimination of the hybrid work policy that city employees received earlier this week. This year, or actually, end of 2014, I was celebrated my 10th year with the City of Hayward. I knew many of you when you were on the planning commission. I remember when some of you were elected to the City Council. Sermenyo, you've been here the whole time. I remember when Fran David was the city manager. I remember when David Risk was the Development Services Director. In fact, Sarah Bowser, who's now the Development Services Director, and I are the only two that are remaining from planning from that time. What I'm trying to say is I've seen countless staff come and go. And I helped build the incredibly efficient, creative, responsive planning team that develops development applications and stands in front of you and answers questions at the permit center and via email and calls every single day. I have a few concerns about this blanket policy that was instituted without any input or nuance, and which is not accompanied by any specific goals related to enhancing services. Rather, the solution that everyone be in the office five days a week with no exception and no allowances for remote work under any circumstances appears to be an ideological solution in search of a problem. It would be much more helpful for directors and managers who are hired for their expertise, their leadership, their technical expertise in their areas, to be given goals and then allowed to meet those goals in any way they see fit. Further, this policy will not enhance collaboration any more than the technological tools that the city has invested in tremendously over the past five years with no distance whatsoever. Last Friday, I spent much of the day messaging, meeting on Teams, and working on a SharePoint document with the city attorney's office for a completely different department. Weekly, I attend meetings with almost every member of the Public Works Engineering Utilities Surveyors Office and the Landscape Architects to look at plans on, from our e-permit site, do dimensions on Bluebeam, backcheck those dimensions and those facts on the ground using Google Earth. Technology and relationships lead to collaboration. It's not a blanket policy about people having face-to-face or being in a certain spot on a daily basis. Finally, I want to end on a personal note. I had my kids 20 years ago, okay? And I felt like I was sick for about 10 years straight, and they were sick, and I used up all my time, and I had no sick time, and I had no ability to work from home. These technologies did not exist when I had young children. But my colleague Saatchi Ko has young children now, and these technologies do exist. And there's no reason why somebody can't work from home when they have kids that are in front of a television or sleeping, that work in the evening. And with that, I don't want to, I don't want to take too much time, but I do want to say that there's no reason that we should move backwards. We should be moving forwards. And thank you so much.
I wanted to thank you, and also, Madam City Clerk, I wanted to acknowledge that Council, Mayor Protem Roach is in the building. It's okay. And then you had another...
I believe there's one more comment online.
And there is, yes, Mr. Calvin Wong.
Yes, hi. My name's Calvin Wong. I just, just listening from the public comments, I found out that Hayward is instituting a return-to-office policy, and I just want to make a brief comment. I'm currently a California State employee whose office is out of Sacramento, and so, imagine me having to make that commute every single day. Now, that is very likely a reality for me because of Governor Newsom's return-to-office order, and that's created a lot of uncertainty for myself and my coworkers. And so, when I hear that the city is turning back on its hybrid work policy, I really do feel for you because I'm going through the same exact thing. So, I just want to urge that the city not get rid of its hybrid work policy and demonstrate itself as a pro-worker policy, leading in the championing of hybrid work in a state that seems to really be forsaking it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. As all of you know, we cannot speak and comment from, from up here, but I did want to close public comment with these two comments. I have been trying as hard as I can to keep up with the emails that I've been receiving, and I know we've all been receiving emails up here. And I have essentially been promising two things. One, to listen. We're listening, and I know we're all reading your emails, and we're certainly talking about this. So, I'll, on behalf of my colleagues, I will make that promise to you. Secondly, I will also promise that we will work with you. We will continue to work with the city manager, and whatever we do, we absolutely want to make sure it's done collaboratively. We absolutely want to make sure that whatever we come up with, it's done together. You know, I, we all know that we're all committed to this process. We're all committed to the city. And so, I really wanted to thank all of you for coming this evening and voicing your perspective. But we're listening, and I appreciate you coming out. But what I wanted to do, I wanted to turn to the city manager and see if she had a comment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I as well would like to acknowledge that I've listened carefully to the issues and concerns that were raised here as part of the public comment. And I recognize this is a, that this transition is challenging, and it affects people very deeply and in different ways. And I also want to know, and I also want you to know that I've heard them. But it's also true that this operational shift is not just, not about undoing... But it's also true that this operational shift is not just not about undoing what's worked or correcting what may be wrong. It's about strengthening connections, collaboration, and our ability to serve the public with excellence. And I will continue to extend myself in support of a respectful and thoughtful return while ensuring that the city remains well-positioned to meet our communities' evolving needs. And we will do our best to be in constant communication with our employees, and my door remains open to listen and engage. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I move on from public comment, I wanted to take this time to acknowledge we do have an intern working with us. She's working in the City Clerk's office. Her name is Giselle Sanchez. Giselle. And let's give Giselle a big round of applause. Giselle comes to us from the Rising Leaders Program. We have been working with this program for a very long time, and I know our City Clerk has been working with interns from the program. These students are incredible students. They're outstanding students, and they are getting the experience, as much experience as possible, to work in local government. So we look forward to you joining not us, maybe us or another city, but hopefully your career is certainly bright. So thank you very much for being here tonight. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I will move on to the consent calendar. And I do know that there was a call that wanted to make a public comment on consent. So if that person can queue up. But before I call on that individual, I will entertain a motion or a comment.
I'll move items.
Moved by Councilmember Andrews, seconded by Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Roach. But what I want to do first is I wanted to open up to public comment. And I know that TJ from Hayward Concerned Citizens.
Hi, yeah, I just wanted to speak on item number six on the consent calendar. Of course. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, good. Good evening, Council. This is TJ, speaking on behalf of Hayward Concerned Citizens. I'd like to acknowledge the city's efforts so far on initiating the eventuality of a new police department or public safety center since Measure K-1 got approved by Hayward voters. The staff report clearly underscores why the time is now for a new state-of-the-art building for all of the reasons listed in the report. When the initial needs assessment was completed back in 2016, just a couple of years after Measure C was first passed, the feedback was that based on operational needs and in comparison to similar cities, the new building should ideally be 68,000 square feet. The current building, as it stands now, is around 41,000 square feet. And it was projected that by the year 2040, the building would need to be 98,000 square feet to accommodate evolving department needs. And this estimate did not include the animal shelter at that time. I'd also like to advocate with other HCC members that the public safety center be built on the 1525 West Winton Avenue site, because it's a larger and a more open space, and it would foster even greater collaboration with the fire training center that's already there. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, on behalf of all the supporters of Hayward Animal Shelter, that the Winton Avenue site would be ideal for the expansion that they have long deserved. So thank you again for moving this item forward. I'm very excited for the good this will bring to our city, and I hope we will hear of a location and plan for groundbreaking in the near future.
Okay. Thank you. And if I recall correctly, I think it was Ariana Castagnano's. She doesn't have her hand up, but...
Work session.
Oh, the work session. Okay. Yeah, that's right. Okay. Okay, so seeing no more, I will close public comment, return to the dais. And I know it was moved by Councilmember Andrews and seconded by Council, or Mayor Protem Roach. If there are no further questions or comments, and if there are no objections, the consent calendar will unanimously pass. Thank you. And I believe at this point, we're going to take a 10-minute break?
It's up to you guys. I think if you would like to take a break to have dinner, great.
Yeah. Okay. We're going to take a 15-minute break. Stay tuned.
Miriam, I can put a slide up right now for the audience. Thank you.
Okay. So let's take a 15-minute break.
Madam City Clerk, when Councilmember Bonilla and Mayor Pro Tem Roach, when they come back in, I'll start. Madam City Clerk, you should send Ms. Sanchez in there to wrangle the council members out here. That's your initiation. Okay, welcome back. I wanted to apologize. We went over a little bit, but we were in the back having a light snack. So want to welcome everybody back. It is 6:30. And I am following the agenda. Our next item is our work session. Item number 10 is the Hayward's Strategic Roadmap Work Session Part Two. And I'm going to pass this over to our city manager. And the city manager has given me permission to now I am no longer the chair. I just sit and participate. So Madam City Manager.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. It's a pleasure to introduce today's planning session. And I want to recognize that we're being joined tonight by members of the executive team. The entire executive team is here. And also, we have our Deputy Director for Finance, Christina Crosby, as well as Amy Cole Bloom, who is our Community Services Director, and Deputy Fire Chief Ryan Hamry, and certainly our Christina Morales with our Housing Deputy Development Director of Services. Deputy Director of Developmental Services. The entire team is here in support of you to engage in a thoughtful discussion, to understand your priorities and your interests. And to engage in that or continue with the strategic planning session, we're going to frame today's exercise by giving you an update on the fiscal state of the city that also includes the latest information on Measure CK1. And also, we will take some facilitated conversation on reviewing our metrics for impact because it's a new addition to the strategic planning session because we want to make sure that we're measuring the things that are important to you if in fact we're looking for very specific impacts on the proposed projects. There will be an opportunity for staff to present to you as a focus topic, the HART program, which was an initiative of prior years in understanding the lessons that we have learned. And we're in the proposed preview of the staff's proposal as we embark in the fiscal year 2025-26 budget planning process. And then we are going to get down to working. We will be asking you to engage in this wall of papers in a ranking exercise that will be led by Mary Thomas, Assistant to the City Manager, who's done a lot of work to create the right experience to understand really what are your priorities for the special project as well as for the metrics. And then we'll have a very brief conclusion and continue crystallizing what is the pathway to get to a document that will be ready for you to take action on at a future city council meeting. So in closing, most importantly, just as a gentle reminder, tonight is about to engage you in a thoughtful conversation with members of the executive team and staff who may be able to answer your questions and give you more information that you may need. We're going to be taking diligent notes, but we're not taking any action tonight. We're just simply looking for feedback. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Assistant to the City Manager, Mary Thomas, who has done tremendous amount of work to get us here tonight. So Mary?
Thank you, City Manager Alvarez. I'm putting the goals up, but City Manager just covered these. So I'm going to quickly go to our next slide. Welcome. Thank you guys for joining for part two. And thank you for taking the pre-survey ahead of this. So as with past years, we ask you to take a pre-survey. And I will start by saying we can save some time tonight because all of you confirm that the vision statement and priorities that are in there are the ones that are the right fit for Hayward's. So we can skip those sections this evening. And I do also want to set some context that we did hear when the general plan update came to you last month, that there is a desire to see more sort of cross-referencing and streamlining between various planning documents. So tonight, we can just do a thumbs up, thumbs down. The City Manager Alvarez is seeking some confirmation or just asking council if this is a priority for us to work on for the next six months to make sure that we're streamlining those documents. If so, we'll keep working on that. And in addition, we definitely heard in the pre-survey that there's some questions about past referrals. So we have started that work. We are collecting all of the past referrals for the last three years. And we will provide that in a memo with where those referrals are at and any action that was taken. So I'm going to immediately, just to set the context here. As you know, the strategic roadmap is directly tied to the budget and vice versa. So I've been working with Sriif to talk through what the May 13th work session will look like. But he's going to provide some context for you about the budget.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager Alvarez and staff. I am Sriif Fettman, your Interim Director of Finance. And we thought it was important to obviously take a pause and talk about our projections for next year, what we're looking at for the following year as obviously you start to frame your priorities and talk about what priorities will take precedence over others or what things may need to be deferred or changed for the following year. We've had some individual meetings with City Manager Alvarez and you. This is the first time in public that we are talking about our projections. And we'll go into detail next month and in the coming months, obviously, regarding these projections. But we are projecting about a $218 million general fund revenue. My focus has been on general fund. Obviously, we're much larger than that with over $400 million in total funds with general fund and our enterprise funds. The main focus is obviously the general fund as that does impact your reserve. It does impact many of your decisions moving forward. And that's where you have your most discretion as council. We do have reductions in total of about $8 million projected for next year. That's due to the ARPA funds that we knew were going away. There's a change in sales tax, property transfer tax, where we talk about less houses being sold and transferred. That's a projection for next year and some other reductions. The projected general fund expenses, you can see, obviously, is much higher than the $218 million. That's $230 million. And that main increase is due to the salary and benefit commitments that were made last year. There are multiple MOUs that had come up, multiple adjustments and changes made to staffing. And obviously, when 80% of your budget is in staffing, that's the proper place where things will increase, obviously. But that was to the tune of about $11 million. And that's an ongoing expense that the city must maintain to maintain those commitments moving forward. So with that, I understand that there's been discussion and projections that the projected deficit next year was around $6 million. There was some discussion it was $8 or $9 million at some point when we looked at it. Last we looked at it last, myself and staff and all of the department heads, we are looking at over a $12 million deficit for next year. So the deficit is growing. It's not shrinking. The more we look, obviously, the more things happen. And City Manager Alvarez and I have been looking for a word to kind of describe the budget moving forward. And we're kind of putting out some words, but it's precarious because we don't know. And so because we don't know what's happening at the federal level, because we don't know some of the other impacts, this could completely change tomorrow based on decisions made at the federal level in Washington, DC, or in other places, or when it comes to funding or grant funding. And so we're trying to make our best guesstimate. And obviously, when you have an organization this large, I as your Finance Director, when we talk about a projected deficit of $12 million, we're so large, the deficit could be $5 million, it could be $8 million, it could be 15. But it's not zero. And so this is not a balanced budget. It does not appear it will balance unless we make some changes. And part of my recommendations in working with City Manager Alvarez and working with the executive team is that we need to make some corrective action in order that this deficit does not grow, obviously. And so this plays into the discussion tonight of what the priorities are. And my ask as the Finance Director is your priorities are your priorities as council and as staff. We just need to know that we can't do it all based on the funding that we have and something might have to give. So if you have a new priority for $500,000, what may have to be given up on the $500,000 on the other side? And so as we look to move forward, some of the things we've talked about are we've added a fall revise. City Manager Alvarez certainly sees the need for a fall revise where we can come back to council so we're not waiting until mid-year, which is usually in February or March. Because that ship is so large, we need to kind of correct that ship. And whether we make some small changes by fall or we have some larger changes, we certainly want the opportunity to come back and make adjustments. Changes will take time. You can't solve a $12 million deficit overnight. And my message to the team, to staff, to everybody is that this is not an overnight decision. It will take multiple years to right the ship and get us to a point where we have a balanced budget and we can replenish some of our funds, replenish our reserve, and move forward. So this is not going to be, there's no quick solution. There's no magic bullet to solving this. And then I've always asked, and we've talked about a measured and thoughtful approach, that we take time to discuss these decisions and not, the decisions are based on an actual dollar amount, but based on council priorities and community priorities. So rather than say, we need to lower the budget by $5 million, we are asking and we would much rather have you talk about what programs are we serving? What are we doing for the community? And with that comes with a program, whether you continue or not continue or ramp it up or ramp it down as opposed to the dollar amount. And that's coming from your Director of Finance. I don't like decisions based on dollars. We need to have it based on programs. And I know City Manager Alvarez and executive team certainly support that as we move forward. And then the last piece is, we all get comfortable with core services and priorities. And not everything can be a priority and not everything can be a core service. And so I purposely had here redefine your core services to really look at, is this a core service for us? What are we doing moving forward and what are our priorities? Because something would have to give, obviously, moving forward. As was prefaced by the council meeting we had a couple of weeks ago when we talk about our priorities, we can't be everything to all people financially speaking. And so what are our priorities as a city as opposed to the counties, the states, the federal government? And certainly, when you have a $12 million deficit, those discussions will certainly need to be had.
Deputy Fire Chief Ryan Hamery and certainly our Christina Morales with our Housing Deputy Development Director Services, Deputy Director of Developmental Services. The entire team is here in support of you to engage in a thoughtful discussion to understand your priorities and your interests and to engage in that or continue with the strategic planning session. We're going to frame today's exercise by giving you an update on the fiscal state of the city that also includes the latest information on Measure CK1. And also, we will take some facilitated conversation on reviewing our metrics for impact because it's a new addition to the strategic planning session because we want to make sure that we're measuring the things that are important to you if, in fact, we're looking for very specific impacts on the proposed projects. There will be an opportunity for staff to present to you as a focus topic, the HART program, which was an initiative of prior years in understanding the lessons that we have learned and were in the proposed preview of the staff's proposal as we embark in the fiscal year 2025-26 budget planning process. And then we are going to get down to working. We will be asking you to engage in this wall of papers in a ranking exercise that will be led by Mary Thomas, Assistant to the City Manager, who's done a lot of work to create the right experience to understand really what are your priorities for the special project as well as for the metrics. And then we'll have a very brief conclusion and continue crystallizing what is the pathway to get to a document that will be ready for you to take action on at a future city council meeting. So in closing, most importantly, just as a gentle reminder, tonight is about to engage you in a thoughtful conversation with members of the executive team and staff who may be able to answer your questions and give you more information that you may need. We're going to be taking diligent notes, but we're not taking any action tonight. We're just simply looking for feedback. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Assistant to the City Manager, Mary Thomas, who has done tremendous amount of work to get us here tonight. So, Mary?
Thank you, City Manager Alvarez. I'm putting the goals up, but City Manager just covered these, so I'm going to quickly go to our next slide. Welcome. Thank you, guys, for joining for part two and thank you for taking the pre-survey ahead of this. So as with past years, we ask you to take a pre-survey. And I will start by saying we can save some time tonight because all of you confirmed that the vision statement and priorities that are in there are the ones that are the right fit for Hayward, so we can skip those sections this evening. And I do also want to set some context that we did hear when the general plan update came to you last month, that there is a desire to see more sort of cross-referencing and streamlining between various planning documents. So tonight, we can just do a thumbs up, thumbs down. The City Manager Alvarez is seeking some confirmation or just asking council if this is a priority for us to work on for the next six months to make sure that we're streamlining those documents. If so, we'll keep working on that. And in addition, we definitely heard in the pre-survey that there's some questions about past referrals, so we have started that work. We are collecting all of the past referrals for the last three years, and we will provide that in a memo with where those referrals are at and any action that was taken. So I'm going to immediately, just to set the context here, as you know, the strategic roadmap is directly tied to the budget and vice versa. So I've been working with Sri to talk through what the May 13th work session will look like, but he's going to provide some context for you about the budget.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager Alvarez and staff. I am Sri Fettman, your interim Director of Finance. And we thought it was important to obviously take a pause and talk about our projections for next year, what we're looking at for the following year, as obviously you start to frame your priorities and talk about what priorities will take precedence over others or what things may need to be deferred or changed for the following year. We've had some individual meetings with City Manager Alvarez and you. This is the first time in public that we are talking about our projections, and we'll go into detail next month and in the coming months, obviously, regarding these projections. But we are projecting about a $218 million general fund revenue. My focus has been on general fund. Obviously, we're much larger than that with over $400 million in total funds with general fund and our enterprise funds. The main focus is obviously the general fund as that does impact your reserve. It does impact many of your decisions moving forward, and that's where you have your most discretion as council. We do have reductions in total of about $8 million projected for next year. That's due to the ARPA funds that we knew were going away. There's a change in sales tax, property transfer tax, where we talk about less houses being sold and transferred. That's a projection for next year and some other reductions. The projected general fund expenses, you can see, obviously, is much higher than the $218 million. That's $230 million. And that main increase is due to the salary and benefit commitments that were made last year. There are multiple MOUs that had come up, multiple adjustments and changes made to staffing. And obviously, when 80% of your budget is in staffing, that's the proper place where things will increase, obviously. But that was to the tune of about $11 million, and that's an ongoing expense that the city must maintain to maintain those commitments moving forward. So with that, I understand that there's been discussion and projections that the projected deficit next year was around $6 million. There was some discussion it was $8 or $9 million at some point when we looked at it. Last we looked at it last, myself and staff and all of the department heads, we are looking at over a $12 million deficit for next year. So the deficit is growing. It's not shrinking. The more we look, obviously, the more things happen. And City Manager Alvarez and I have been looking for a word to kind of describe, you know, the budget moving forward, and we're kind of putting out some words, but it's precarious because we don't know. And so because we don't know what's happening at the federal level, because we don't know some of the other impacts, this could completely change tomorrow based on decisions made at the federal level in Washington, DC, or in other places, or when it comes to funding or grant funding. And so we're trying to make our best guesstimate. And obviously, when you have an organization this large, I as your finance director, when we talk about a projected deficit of $12 million, we're so large, the deficit could be $5 million. It could be $8 million. It could be 15, but it's not zero. And so this is not a balanced budget. It does not appear it will balance unless we make some changes. And part of my recommendations in working with City Manager Alvarez and working with the executive team is that we need to make some corrective action in order that this deficit does not grow, obviously. And so this plays into the discussion tonight of what the priorities are. And my ask as the finance director is your priorities are your priorities as council and as staff. We just need to know that we can't do it all based on the funding that we have and something might have to give. So if you have a new priority for $500,000, what may have to be given up on the $500,000 on the other side? And so as we look to move forward, some of the things we've talked about are we've added a fall revise. City Manager Alvarez certainly sees the need for a fall revise where we can come back to council, so we're not waiting until mid-year, which is usually in February or March, because that ship is so large, we need to kind of correct that ship. And whether we make some small changes by fall or we have some larger changes, we certainly want the opportunity to come back and make adjustments. Changes will take time. You can't solve a $12 million deficit overnight. And my message to the team, to staff, to everybody is that this is not an overnight decision. It will take multiple years to right the ship and get us to a point where we have a balanced budget and we can replenish some of our funds, replenish our reserve, and move forward. So this is not going to be, there's no quick solution. There's no magic bullet to solving this. And then I've always asked, and we've talked about a measured and thoughtful approach, that we take time to discuss these decisions and not, the decisions are based on an actual dollar amount, but based on council priorities and community priorities. So rather than say, we need to lower the budget by $5 million, we are asking and we would much rather have you talk about what programs are we serving? What are we doing for the community? And with that comes with a program, whether you continue or not continue or ramp it up or ramp it down, as opposed to the dollar amount. And that's coming from your Director of Finance. I don't like decisions based on dollars. We need to have it based on programs. And I know City Manager Alvarez and executive team certainly support that as we move forward. And then the last piece is, we all get comfortable with core services and priorities, and not everything can be a priority and not everything can be a core service. And so I purposely had here redefine your core services to really look at, is this a core service for us? What are we doing moving forward and what are our priorities? Because something would have to give, obviously, moving forward. As was prefaced by the council meeting we had a couple of weeks ago when we talk about our priorities, we can't be everything to all people financially speaking. And so what are our priorities as a city as opposed to the counties, the states, the federal government? And certainly, when you have a $12 million deficit, those discussions will certainly need to be had. So I will stop there, basically kind of just setting the stage for tonight and moving forward. The state of the budget, as we mentioned before, it could be as dramatic or as simple as you want it to be. This is certainly solvable. This is not something that's not solvable. It will take time and take some measured and thoughtful approaches to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're all, so, and over here now, all the way over here, we have Director Mary is going to speak to some of our capital projects that also appear in the strategic roadmap and specifically to Measure CK1. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Let me first cover Measure C, how much revenue we get and what the obligations, current obligations are. Measure C, as you know, was passed in 2014 as a 20-year measure. In 2024, it was extended by Measure K1 for another 20 years, meaning that it is in effect through 2054. That is 29 years from now, so short of 30 years. The current revenue in 2025-26 is $22.9 million. It grows gradually over the years, but you have before you the mid-year between now and 2054. That's about $36.9 million. The operating expenses currently are about $8 million. The measure supports a number of staff, and that is the operating expense. The operating expense also are going to grow every year, you know, towards the end. There are current capital expenditures this year to the tune of $7.4 million, and there is also an existing debt service expenditure of $4.5 million. So that means that the cash available this year from Measure C is only $2.8 million. There is a cumulative balance in Measure C of about $10.5 million. That is going to grow, as you can see, over the years, but I will explain how this compares to the needs that we have right now. So next slide, please. So these covers the projects that council has identified as priorities for Measure C to be undertaken. The Public Safety Center was estimated a few years ago, three or four years ago, as costing up to $250 million, between $200 and $250 million. My estimate today is that with all the needs that, you know, there is the estimate of $250 million is more realistic. With that and my own calculation based on a 30-year loan, the payment for that, if you borrow that money to construct the facility, would be about $16.2 million a year. The Corporation Yard is in need of refurbishing and rehab. The cost has been estimated at $140 million. This is a cost estimate that I received only a couple of weeks ago from one of our engineers, one of our consultants. The good thing is that the Corporation Yard is used about 50% by enterprise funds, by water and sewer collection. So I have assumed that half of that cost is going to be borne by them as opposed to Measure C. The payment for $70 million in bond financing for the facility would be $4.5 million per year. If you wanted to consider Weeks Branch Library, my estimate is that the cost is going to be $50 million for a 20,000-foot facility based on that, and then the payment is going to be just over $3 million a year. And then the Stack Center has some funding shortfall, as you know, $25 million, the payment of $1.6 million. Fire Station 9, I have estimated it to cost $15 million, $1 million a year. And then we have a pavement condition index that is 76 right now. It's one of the best it has been in the past 15 years. A question that council posed to me was what it takes to maintain this PCI of 76. That would be $4 million a year, and that's what you see there. So the total expenses, if I add them up, is about $480 million with an annual payment of just over $30 million a year. We don't have, obviously, we don't have that money. We have another $200 million in unfunded projects that are not eligible for Measure C, so I did not mention them here. With the funding that, with the money that comes in right now in Measure C that I described in the previous slide, I'm assuming that if we can convince a bank or a financial agency that we are able to pay based on the mid-year midpoint, which is $18 million, we should be able to get a loan for about $200 million. So there is a shortfall here, $290 million. So there is a shortfall. We are not going to be able to do all of these projects. We can do the first two, or if you are lucky and we downsize some of these projects and find some other source of funding, maybe the top three. I'll be happy to answer any questions with that.
And if I may, I would like to add that I'm really grateful to Director Mary because he has agreed to embark on leading the three largest capital projects in the city's history at the same time with his team, only so that we can capture the opportunity of less expensive projects. But we're doing the Waterways Treatment Plan, the Public Safety Building, and the Corporation Yard. And perhaps if we have enough money, start on the Weeks Branch Library, all at the same time, so that we can leverage the funding that we have.
Councilmember Roach and then Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you, Director Mary. It's really great to see these slides all at once. Can you bring up the other one, the current revenues and obligations? Well, I have it up, but can you bring that slide back up? Oh, thank you. So based on your projections on the next slide with the, you know, the amount we're going to have to pay every year, does this contemplate those projects in here in your budget projections? Or is this just current obligation?
This is the current obligations and the revenues that are expected from Measure C, Measure K1 to come in.
Okay. And then with the operating expenses, what does that entail for the operating expenses?
A number of staff in different departments are basically charging to Measure C, and the positions were added because of Measure C. That was approved under the initial approval of Measure C, and those are the expenses.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I think that's all I have right now. I just wanted to understand the projection. Thank you.
And just to be more specific, in terms of the operating expenses, there's 23 full-time equivalent positions. Out of those, 14 are with the fire department and nine are with the maintenance services department. Excuse me, 23?
14 are with the police.
Oh, 14, yes, 14. 14 FDIs with the police. Now, ideally, in a perfect world, if we had a different economic outlook, I would be recommending that we start backing those out of Measure C and putting them into the general fund, but I don't think that will be feasible in the next couple of years.
Thank you. So that's a good question. So that was contemplated in the original Measure C.
Correct.
Sort of case to the public, I guess, right? And so, but I guess now with continuing Measure K1, those presumably will continue in the...
None of those assumptions, as far as I know, changed during the approval of K1. There were just some obligations related to doing some of the capital improvement projects in addition to the existing obligations.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone involved with doing this staff reports. They were very clear, and thank you for all the documents that were submitted today. Just want to acknowledge your efforts on that. I saw on the list for invest in infrastructure, La Vista Park, and then you have this set. Do we have a dollar amount for La Vista Park that is remaining? I'm losing track of the amount that was discussed for La Vista.
So La Vista Park is currently in the bid process. The bids are expected next week. There is enough funding in the current project to support that project.
Okay, great.
If the bids come in at or slightly over the engineer's estimate.
Okay, got it. I hear you. Okay, got it. And then wanted to see also with Fire Station 9, is that the only fire station that we're looking at? No other?
That's the remaining one, yes.
That is the remaining one? Okay. And then are we talking to anyone about opportunities to partner with organizations in regards to the Stack Center for the $50 million? Or how much is it again?
25.
25, sorry, 25, 50s for...
Yeah, $25 million gap. And yes, there's ongoing, we have three grant applications out right now and various other, you know, partnerships. In the staff report that we gave you, we will be giving you a memo on all the opportunities for that. How realistic some of those partnerships are, I don't know, but we can, we'll explain.
And can we seek the same partnerships for the Weeks Library? Are there potential partnerships there that we can look at?
I won't speak for a library or Public Works, but I'm assuming we could ask the same questions of the same partners. They're having their own fiscal constraints as well, like the state library and the county, but we could definitely ask.
Okay. And then for the pavement index, for the 76%, is there an amount of feet that you're thinking of a goal in terms of pavement that you were looking for under that $4 million?
Yes, there is, but basically what we want to do is to do as much work to maintain our PCI of 76. That could be 10 miles, could be a little bit more than 10 miles. So far, we've been able to find some monies that we had saved in our direct local distribution from Alameda County Transportation Commission, but that money is no longer available. So in order to maintain PCI of 76, we need to have about $4 million a year more.
Okay, all right. Okay, and then are we also commenting on the interim Director of Finance report as well? Okay. So I thank you for your report on this. I wanted to just kind of reiterate what I've been trying to stress is the importance of us opening businesses so we can attain more sales tax, so we can help with this deficit, and just want to see, maybe this is later part of the presentation, but I do think we need to empower our Economic Development Department to make sure that we are getting these businesses open. It's been great seeing Hayward Retail Center thrive in the city. It's been booming, so if we can get five more of those, maybe one in every district, that would be something that we should strive for. But just wanted to see if you all have internally kind of talked about those goals in terms of increasing sales tax, not in terms of the amount of money, but how do you increase in certain sectors in order to get more sales tax?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Andrews. I was remiss to acknowledge that precisely because of those points that you're making, that's why we have our chief economic development person here joining us, Paul Nunez. And those conversations are being had practically every day on the fourth floor, along with the finance director and my immediate Assistant City Managers team. How can we leverage each possibility to be able to bring more revenue to the city in creative ways and also being very proactive in anticipating changes in conditions in the next two to five years? For instance, we have a tremendous opportunity coming up in 2026 with large sporting events that are coming to the Bay Area. And we're also very creatively looking at different ways of activating or creating destination places so that we can stimulate the local economy. And the city council's Economic Development Committee will be embarking on a series of site tours to different economic corridors so that we can continue having these conversations and understanding what may be some of the barriers there and the things that we can do to stimulate the economy.
Okay. All right, and I would be interested in looking at expedited reviews of businesses and so we can get them open. And then if there's any other opportunities where we can partner with organizations to help them get open, whether it's the East Bay Economic Development Alliance, Chamber, whoever it is, just to give us some support there. Thank you.
Mayor Pertim Roach.
Thanks. I just, oh, sorry. Just really quick, I wanted to ask about, you know, on the projects, I guess we'll have a chance to weigh in on this later, right? Because I am, you know, if we can't do, for example, the library, and believe me, Jonte, I want to do a new library. It's not like I don't want to. I'm just worried that if we can't do that, but we do the fire station or we just do another Stack Center allotment, that there's a chance for us to weigh in on this later before we make a decision on that?
Absolutely, yes.
Because it does seem like it's, there's dwindling, you know, obviously, availability in Measure C. Okay, thank you. And then the other thing, going back to the fiscal report, thank you. I really like the idea of having the sort of fall revisal because I agree that, like, we can't wait till the mid-year. You know, because I think tonight, we're all going to hear that we have to just stay with core services in order to get back to this, to our reserves and, you know, but if there is going to be an opportunity to go forward with some of the projects that council wants, then I think we need to know, you know, we want to know, like, are we heading in a better direction than we think? Like, is it really going to be less $8 million than we think? Or, you know, the fund revenue might be better than we think? So I appreciate that plan to come back in the fall. Thank you.
Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for this great report, everyone. This has been really informative. So going back to the K1, the revenue and obligations, just to kind of make sure that I understand it. So the bottom line is essentially the green highlighted area, which says how much cash flow we have available to spend in each of those years, right?
That is the amount of money that will be left over every year after these obligations have been satisfied.
Got it.
That's the amount of money that you can use as seed money for some of the projects, for instance.
Got it. So like for the years where we have like 9.5 million and 10 million available, and then I look at the project list and, for an example, like the Public Safety Center would be like 16.2 million a year, so that obviously wouldn't be able to happen until we get to one of the years where there's like the 18.9 million. Because I'm just trying to think about how all of that works, because it seems like there's so little available funds when we're talking about like maybe nine point, you know, about $10 million through 2030, and it seems like some of these projects, you know, I mean, the Public Safety Center, 16 million.
Councilmember Bonilla, my point was that if we can talk to a financial institution and convince them that the revenues are growing and the mid-year, we are going, the midterm of the 30 years, we are going to receive an average of 18.9 million, and that is good for borrowing $290 million. We can, as they say, scalp the payments to start with smaller payments that we can afford towards larger payments in the out years. So that's how we should be able to borrow $290 million with current interest rates and financial conditions.
That's very helpful. Thank you so much. And then as it relates to the budget, can you tell us kind of what our reserves are looking like? Because I feel like that was just the one piece that we need to hear about too for the full picture.
Yeah, our reserves, we do have a 20% policy set by council to have reserves set aside. Obviously, if we have 20% of your 200 and...
No, I mean, what do we have now in the reserves?
Right now, what we have in the reserves is we have $32 million in spendable reserves. Your total reserves is $42 million.
Thank you.
And that 32 million represents about 14%. And so the goal is obviously to be at 20% at any given time. We haven't necessarily done that in the past years. We've been at 15, maybe 18. 20 is the goal, but right now, like we talk about the, you're heading in the opposite direction where your reserves are shrinking.
Yep, makes sense. Thank you so much. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Zermeño.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the report. Also, why are we including paved improvements in Measure C? Can we not use Measure B and Measure BB monies for pavement improvements?
I use Measure, Councilmember Zermeño, I use Measure B, Measure BB, VRF, SB1, and if we supplement it by Measure C, Measure K1, then we'll be able to maintain our 76. Otherwise, it may, you know, go back a little bit to like 74, 73, that number. So that was just an option that council had asked for. What does it take for us to maintain our PCI of 76? And that's a number that I have come up with, $4 million from Measure C. dollars from Measure C.
We do spend a healthy amount on street improvements, et cetera.
About thirteen million dollars a year, yes.
So in my mind, that should be sufficient, and I would not dip into the Measure C for pavement improvement. I'd let that ride. Because in my mind, the other projects are much more important, especially the top two. In my mind, those are the top two things that we should really work on. I did not, I was not aware that refurbishing Weeks Park would take fifty million dollars. It just seems kind of inflated. I don't know what, are we going to destroy it and put it down and build a new one?
Absolutely. I'm not talking about refurbishing that structure, which is small. It's about four thousand square feet. But this is a new library at the size of twenty thousand square feet. That's a number that can change. You know, you may decide that we can't afford that. The size should be smaller. But the fifty million dollars is based on a twenty thousand square foot building. If you want to compare, the downtown library is fifty-eight thousand square feet. So it would be one-third the size of this library.
Right. So the thought is almost doing a new library at Weeks Park?
Correct, correct.
Yeah. In my mind, I rather spend the money in our public safety and our employees over at the maintenance yard and just do some work on Weeks Park so that it's more accessible. But fifty million dollars, in my mind, is not necessary, not at the moment. And I think the other projects are okay. Stack Center, if we can do that. But again, top two, your top two projects are the ones. I would love to see something also in the La Vista Park.
La Vista Park is funded right now.
Before we do the Weeks Park, or before we do, my apologies to the firefighters, but I think Fire Station Nine can wait a little bit. And then also, well, I already spoken about the pavement improvement. The idea of seeing a fall budget is an excellent idea. That's, you know, mid-year, then fall. And then also a multi-year plan to look into the deficit is the best, in my mind, is the best. So we have one, and then we'll work on decreasing it, et cetera. And my colleague, Andrews, is completely correct in pointing out that the economy needs to grow. We need to have more businesses. We need to encourage our residents to shop Hayward first. And we need to ensure that those businesses that have been closed for two hundred years on B Street are finally opened. So we need to work on that. And thank you. And let's work on it. Shop Hayward first. I do.
I just wanted to just quickly jump in and ground us in the mission of tonight. So this is a really healthy conversation. I'm sure Director Mary is getting a lot of great feedback for a future work session. Tonight, we're looking at the strategic roadmap, so we're not making any decisions about ranking these or anything. This is, again, helpful, but just for any, yeah, as we're moving forward.
Councilwoman Syrup.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you grounding us. Mary, I've got to make a few comments now, though, because I'm not going to be the only person without them.
Go for it, yeah.
So we've already opened that can of worms. Appreciate the check on the budget. I think it's really healthy for us to understand the weight of our structural deficit. We're in a very fortunate position right now where we have a reserve. And I think it's important that we work to build up that reserve because, as many folks are aware, with the unpredictability of our current economy, with the tariffs and all the other economic decisions that are being made, we could be heading into a recession. And so the exercise of trying to realize savings and correct for this structural deficit now saves us from having to correct for a larger deficit. I would hate to see our city in the position that Oakland has found itself in over the last year. And so I'm glad that we are getting ahead of this and also want to voice support for the fall work session, too. I think this is good fiduciary stewardship. You know, we are taking this seriously. We are trying to get ahead of it while we still have some money in our piggy bank. So I appreciate you bringing this number to our attention. And I look forward to our future discussions as we try to course correct this ship. Can you throw up, can we get these K1 obligations on the screens just so I can see them? Thank you. Next slide, please, for the projects. So obviously, these are very high numbers. We made a lot of promises in K1. We've made a lot of promises with Measure C as well, and I'm proud that we've kept most of them, if not all of them. And actually, I've started using the funds to expand. Just a few quick notes, I think, to the city manager's comment, we have a number of vacancies in the police department, and we're funding a lot of positions with Measure C currently. I think there needs to be some adjustment or rebalancing, especially as we try to pursue large capital improvement projects like this. If there is a culture that we're trying to build around this fund to focus on capital improvement projects like this, I'm all for that. But I think that we can't just keep it as is. We have to look hard at what can adjust, including the operational expenses year over year. I really want to strongly advocate for the Stack Center and future conversations. That's a shovel-ready project. So that cost is only going to go up the longer we wait. And if it gets funding now, it could be built now for the South Hayward community. And to Councilmember Zermeño's point, you know, the Weeks Branch Library, we're doing some renovations right now. Hopefully, those hold out for a while. I think if we're building a brand-new Stack Center, which the library is being able to partner with, that's a big win for South Hayward. So I agree with you. I think, you know, holding off on that a little bit, but prioritizing the Stack Center would be my priority, especially because it's ready to go right now. I think we have to get very creative around the Public Safety Center and the corp yard. I understand the need for both. These are incredibly high costs. We have the same approach we're taking to Weeks Branch, which is maybe building out a new building with a slightly smaller footprint and rehabilitating the current building, right? Like, we just approved five hundred grand tonight to do a site assessment and start to think about designs for this. So I'm eager to see what comes back from that. I'm not opposed to the project, but I think that before we make this commitment, the reason I want to give these comments is because it says proposed at the moment. And I don't want folks to think, yes, this is what we're going to immediately move forward with. This is the price I were immediately moving forward with. I'm supportive, but I want to see the designs first before we say we're going to commit the bulk of everything we're bringing in from K1 to these projects. And I just want to reiterate wildfires, the fire station amount is smaller on here, but we are in a fire hazard area. This investment could save a lot of money and a lot of lives down the line. So I just want us to seriously consider that as we move forward with this conversation. I know it's not the top project on the list, but I see there being a lot of benefit to that, especially for neighborhoods like Garen or the Highlands or Stonebri. And I'll leave my comments there as we move on in the conversation. But thank you for this report. I really appreciate you bringing it forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Goldstein.
Thank you. Yeah, that fifty million dollar price tag for the Weeks Branch, we hadn't actually been prepared for such a big number. And so I think what we're feeling, just speaking for myself here, is we're hard to imagine the justification for a fifty million dollar library. On the other hand, as Councilmember Syrup pointed out, economic vitality is absolutely essential. We want to make a difference throughout our community. And being able to provide services that our great library director is able to provide, access to books, reading materials and so forth, these are all big pluses. And if any park of this city right now really needs that development, you know, to see great things happening, it's right there. So I'm in favor of doing something, but I'm just feeling like we weren't really prepared for a fifty million dollar price tag. And so I would like to see some justification for that. So if we can hear more about that, that would be fantastic. I'm excited that La Vista Park is getting ready for bid. That's another project in South Hayward that I think is going to be a key destination point. And the more things that we can do that bring people, not just Hayward residents, but people throughout the region, have them come to Hayward, that is also going to stimulate economic activity here. So it's important, right? We talked about events as a way to stimulate economic development here. And so we have the new Mount Eden Event Center. And, you know, if anyone in this audience hasn't been there yet, you really need to go attend an event there. It's a beautiful, beautiful facility. And so having events there and at the Downtown Theater will bring people to the downtown and to that part of town. And if we also work on having events, like sporting events and concerts, that bring people here in the evening hours where they will likely want to stay overnight, then we're also contributing to our hotel economy. And not just the hotel tax, but actually benefiting our hotel operators. And word gets around, Hayward being a happenin' place, people are going to want to spend time here. And what do they do when they spend time here? Usually, they spend money. And that's what we want. We want our businesses to thrive. And along those lines, in order to make it a comfortable and welcoming place where people want to come, they need to have streets that are improved. You know, it's kind of a crazy thing, but, you know, when just think about it for a minute. When you think about the places that you go to visit, do you ever shy away from going to the places because the streets have potholes? I've actually heard people tell me that they do. Now, I ride a motorcycle, and I can ride right around those potholes. But I tell you, when I hit one, it's not fun. So I'm thinking street improvements. And by the way, the economists tell me that street improvements are a critical factor in bringing business to the city, as well as street light signals. And, you know, Director Mary, I know we've talked about this several times already, but, you know, having it easy for people, not just convenient by way of distance, but easy for them to travel in a way that is not frightening for them. So having street light signals that encourage people to drive the speed limit and, you know, part of a traffic calming approach, but allows traffic to flow through, those are things that other residents I've spoken to. Some of them have literally told me they do not come to downtown because the traffic is too scary for them. And others have told me that they don't come because it's too frustrating. And I understand what they mean by that. It's, so in any event, the point that I'm making here is that if we really want to see improvements to the economic vitality to our town, we do have to focus on some of these things. Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay. I just want to make one very brief comment. I've listened to everybody, and I appreciate all your comments. But I just want to be clear on where, sort of what I'm going to be looking at, and what I'm going to be tagging, and what I'm going to be reading into this. Last year, Mayor Protem Roach and me, and Councilmember Syrup and many of us, we were out there knocking on doors. We knocked on a lot of doors. We put up a lot of signs. We were out there with the firefighters. We were out there with the police officers, with the POA in the nineteen oh nine, and with other city staff. We were out there with a whole cadre of volunteers. And we went out there and we campaigned for K1. And K1, as an extension of Measure C, in essence, were the priorities, right? We, everything that we have here, I mean, you know, let's go to slide, you know, the slide here. Public Safety Center. I mean, I said public safety facility a million times last year, you know, while we were out there knocking on doors. You know, Weeks Branch Library. I mean, we talked about Weeks Branch Library. I mean, that was every door we knocked on. We said, we're going to bring, you know, we're going to, we said we're going to either rebuild it, reimagine it, and figure out a way to enhance library services in South Hayward. The Stack Center, talked about the Stack Center. Fire Station Nine, I remember saying, we're almost all complete with all of our fire stations and Fire Station Nine. And of course, our pavement, infrastructure. And so I just, you know, as we sort of, as we transition to this next portion up here, I just want to be, I just want to be clear to the council on what I'm going to be looking at and what I'm going to be tagging. Because last year was a, was a big year for us. We had eighty-three percent of Hayward voters gave us, after another ten years, gave us another thirty-year promise, gave us another thirty-year commitment of support for this. And I think that was, that was quite big. And then secondly, is I will also be focusing on bringing back our twenty percent reserve. I know that was a, that was a policy that we instituted back in 2010 or 11 in that time. And over the years, we have, we have stayed at that policy. We've come down a little bit, we've gone up a little bit. But that twenty percent, not only was it a hard number, but it was also very symbolic for me because we came up with that policy as a response to the economic downturn in 2008, 2009, and 2010. And I know Councilmember Zermeño and I were up here, but that was a commitment that we made to the, to the city. So, you know, I just, I was listening to everybody, and I, and I just want to just kind of make sure that we don't forget. And I know we haven't, but I just really want to position us that we don't forget about KC and K1. Okay. Ms. Thomas.
Thank you. And thank you to Sharif and Alex for your great presentations. Mayor, I think this would be a good time, if we do have public comments, to take them.
Okay.
Before we dive into the next.
Okay, so let me, after I open up all these windows here on my computer. Okay, public comments. So I don't have any public comment here in the chamber, but I do have Ariana Castellanos. Go right ahead.
Thank you, council. My name is Ariana, and I'm a community-based mental health therapist, small business owner, homeowner, and proud Hayward resident. I've worked in community mental health for over a decade. So I was glad to see on the special projects attachment for work session, item 10, the rental registry. As a landlord and property manager, I look forward to the initiation of this project. It's important to have a standard for all of us. I've had to deal with relationships where tenants are coming from bad living situations and landlords, as well as when they leave this, my space, going into a living situation that is not what they expected and does not compare to their experience renting for me. I'm also hopeful to see the mention in the special projects document about the people's budget. That led to an update on the park in my neighborhood, Pomosaya. This changed the feeling in my neighborhood dramatically, and I've been able to see a huge benefit among fellow residents, and I feel safer running in my area. I was a little bit dismayed to see the proposal for reinstating SROs on campus without incorporating HART and other viable solutions. As it stands now, the HUSD policy defaults to calling the police, and without the proper protocol shifts, is unable to utilize HART. I've spoken to teachers and counselors in HUSD that feel frustrated about this and to spread thin to get more involved. So it's important that we have both the non-police response to mental health crisis Hayward has developed available to students, as well as adequate considerations for student safety. If SROs were not replaced with adequate support, then this was not a good faith attempt to ensure success in education city. The good news is that there are evidence-based alternatives. These include restorative justice programs, a program called Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, and having mental health counselors and other staff available when students are needing support. I also understand that there is added strain on the fire department for MIHU. And it also seems that the HART program has been useful and is supported by the police department. I'm a little bit hard-pressed to believe that we can't come together to identify sustainable ways to keep it alive, maybe creating community paramedic positions. As a previous first responder to mental health crisis, community mental health, and sexually exploited youth in Alameda County and Hayward, I am sympathetic to the complexity of responding to these calls, as well as to the revolving door of crisis response when the people we serve end up back on the street. The program needing adjustments is to be expected as we learn together how to meet the complex needs of our most vulnerable community members here in Hayward, who are often unable to show up to these kinds of engagements. When people hear about HART in other cities, they get really excited and hopeful. They are energized by our creative and nuanced approach to public safety. Investing in housing, in community mental health, and non-police responses to crisis is investing in public safety and is investing in Hayward. It's the number one thing that has made me a proud resident of Hayward. If Hayward wants to continue to be a gold standard and leader for California cities, I urge council to invite meaningful, good faith engagement related to ways to sustain the rental registry, sustain HART, and address student safety. Thank you so much for your time, council.
Thank you. Calvin Wong.
Yes, hello. Hello again, city council. My name is Calvin Wong. And so I made a public comment two weeks ago in my capacity as a community services commissioner on the CSC's funding recommendations for the service category. I'm here today speaking for myself, and what I'm about to say should not be construed as me speaking on behalf of the CSC or any of its other members. But with that being said, I believe that I wouldn't be fulfilling my duty as a community services commissioner if I didn't call in today to draw the connection between incorporating a rental registry into Hayward's strategic plan and how that supports the work of the CSC. And so a CSC And so, a CSC would bring much-needed transparency to the Hayward rental market and greatly protect renters. A rental registry could safeguard renters from illegal rent hikes, which could price them out of housing. It could also hold landlords accountable for maintaining the habitability of their properties, ensuring that renters have safe living conditions. And so, I'm just speaking for myself again, but when I recommended prioritizing housing and homelessness services on the CSC, knowing that there's very limited funding available, I didn't do so because I just wanted to give those organizations money for the sake of it. I supported those recommendations because those housing and homelessness services are some of the first key steps for getting people into housing. But the process doesn't just end just because we get people housed. There need to be safeguards to ensure that people do not get priced out of housing because of things like illegal rent hikes, or because of landlords who might take advantage of their renters. And so, I'm sure that all of you on the City Council would agree that CSC funding can't be treated as though it's within a vacuum. And so, if we really wanted to ensure that the housing and homelessness funding, based on the recommendations of the CSC, get the most bang for their buck, then the City Council must pursue policies and actions that ensure those very people who are getting housed because of CSC funding for housing and homelessness services stay housed. And so, a commitment to creating a rental registry is one such action that the City Council can take, and so I strongly support it being incorporated into the strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Rose A., but I think it is Rose Aguilar. Ms. Aguilar, are you online?
Okay, I just unmuted. Just came up. In the limited time that I have to speak tonight, I want to emphasize that we can't think that we're going about as business as usual. These are very unique times, given the uncertainty of federal government funding, given the housing crisis that we're, housing and homelessness crisis that we're dealing with. I'm going to speak to two areas in the report, and additional comments I will send to you via email. But I want to talk about housing and homelessness, which is my, as you know, my top priority. Because people's lives, people's lives depend on what you do in this city. And if you're doing stuff that, you know, isn't, is needed, but it's not as effective of people's lives, I don't think we're, we've got the right priorities. So I would like to talk about the rent registry, which I believe will create a self-help environment where renters can check out the regulations on their rental property, report violations, and seek redress. It will support renters, 47% of our residents, who lack knowledge of their rights and resources to claim those rights against powerful landlords and property managers. This program will reduce evictions and price gouging in this unfair housing market, and thus prevent residents from becoming homeless. It will also be very helpful to the staff to enforce regulations that we have on the books, and to gather metrics on outcomes. Another proposed special project on the housing agenda is more affordable housing for low-income residents. The city, as I understand it, will not meet its three new goals in that area. Unless the city, and on the homelessness front, unless the city fast-tracks large-scale homeless housing models such as motels or St. Regis-like buildings, encampments will continue to grow, and the cost of responding will continue to increase, siphoning scarce funds away from the above housing models, which have more permanent outcomes in reducing and solving homelessness. So in conclusion, I would like to say that I support the special project to engage with Alameda County as a stakeholder, not only to secure Measure W dollars, but also to collaborate to acquire large-scale permanent housing.
Ms. Aguilar, you're out of time.
Okay. Such as the 24/7 HART program. Okay, thank you. And I will be sending a written copy.
All righty. Thank you. Okay, I don't see any more public comment. Ms. Thomas, take it away.
Great. So we're going to start tonight with the metrics, and then we'll do a presentation on the HART program, and then we're going to go to special projects. So I just want to give a reality check that if you each speak two minutes for every priority area in metrics, that that's three hours. So if you're comfortable with what we present, you know, take that into consideration. So on the metrics in particular, this is your opportunity. So you heard from us at the Part 1 presentation. We individually heard from each of you in the pre-survey. This is your opportunity to hear from one another, and you know, make your cases to one another if you have certain things you really want us to work on for the coming year. And we're going to start with metrics, so this is not what we're working on, this is more what we're measuring and how we define success. So I'm going to jump into the next slide. In the pre-survey, first of all, council, you really reiterated in some of your comments the importance of metrics and wanting us to do a robust job in reporting them to you and tracking them. So we haven't gotten the dashboard up. That will be up by the end of the fiscal year on this year's metrics that we've set, and you'll be able to see those publicly. We also plan to work over the coming year, this is a lift, but we are, we feel it's important, and we're seeking confirmation from you that it's important, that we disaggregate data when feasible by district in preparation for district elections. And then similarly, that we set time at each council committee meeting to talk about targets, appropriate targets for, for metrics, again, where appropriate. Some metrics may not lend themselves to an easy target, but some might, and then we want to make sure we're setting those at the council committees. As we embark in this exercise, I want to remind you that the discussion tonight is for metrics that would be on the public dashboard. So just keep that in mind. We, staff's response to some of your pre-survey was that we have, at some time, paused about sharing a lot of public, a lot of data publicly without context, which are happy to work towards putting that context on a webpage. However, in some cases, it might be more appropriate to talk about that particular data point in a council committee, if the context would be hard to provide on a website. So. So for this exercise, you each have a worksheet. And so, we're asking you to choose your top. It's okay.
Wait, hold on.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay, oh, yeah.
So on your worksheet, the worksheet is for your notes, just so you can follow along. We're asking you tonight to choose your top 20 overall metrics. It doesn't have, you can do it across any, you could put all your, all of your 20 in one priority area, just helping us understand what your top-third priorities are. So as we go through these slides, you can kind of fill out your worksheet, and then we'll do the dot voting like we've done in past years, so you can see kind of where you all land on that. We're not making any decisions tonight about what we're going to include or not include. We're just collecting more information that we can then use to come back to you at a future session. So I'm going to start with, oh, one last thing. So the color coding. There was some feedback provided to us, and so we put some color coding on your sheet, and then it's also in the slides. So the black are, are metrics in this case, or projects in the future case, that are continuing from the previous year. There's ones we've had in the past. The green are ones that we added after feedback from the Part 1 session, and the blue are ones that a council member added in the survey. So that's what the colors are. Okay, so starting with invest in infrastructure, we didn't have, we, these are, these are your metrics. So opening it up to discussion.
So on our sheet, we have other. So if you want to propose.
Yeah, so after your discussion, if you decide that you want to add another, another one, and we have other up on this as well, if you decide there's other ones you want to add, we can add those tonight.
Do we advocate now, or just fill out the worksheet first?
Yeah, I would say, oh, sorry, I would say, we're going to go slide by slide.
Okay.
So after.
So for this one, I can advocate now for this section.
So advocate now, yes.
Okay. Well, one, I was looking at number of traffic fatalities and serious industries, injuries. What are the exact things that we are looking at to do for that metric?
So I will lean on others if others have answers. My understanding for that would be, would be data from our police department on, on what occurs out of traffic.
So to receive data regarding that, or?
Are you asking about what target we're aiming for, or how we would collect the data?
Invest in infrastructure. So are we just reporting out the number of fatalities? Or are we doing projects to reduce the number?
So the projects would be in a separate section. We're going through metrics right now. The goal of measuring this would just be, we do.
Number of completed projects to go towards that, or just we're trying to reduce it? I'm just trying to.
We're trying to, sorry, we're trying to reduce traffic fatalities. So this would be measuring traffic fatalities.
Okay, got it.
Councilmember Andrews, we have a Vision Zero.
Vision Zero, yes.
That aims to reduce the number of fatalities and injuries to zero by 2050.
Okay.
So this actually measures our progress towards achieving that. It is not something that in one year or two-year we can measure, but long-term, it shows how we are progressing towards that vision that council has.
Okay, so this is the Vision Zero.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Syrup had a question, and then Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm okay with these metrics. I'm going to trust the process here, because I feel like a lot of these metrics can be collected in process, and choosing the top 20 feels a little odd for metrics, because it's spread across multiple departments. So I'm going to, I'm going to go with this exercise. For miles of repaving and sidewalks completed, I'd love if we could also include accessibility data as well. How many wheelchair ramps have we installed? What other kinds of accessibility modifications have we made, just so we can track progress around that? And then I also want to encourage us not to treat this like it's written in stone. When I see something like number of registered hot paratransit users, I want us to think critically about what would make this metric useful. So it's nice to know how many folks are registered. How many rides are we providing? So that's an additional aspect of this that makes the data actionable, or allows us to measure if a program is successful or not. So I don't have specific responses for each one of these, and I think a number of these may already achieve that. But I would encourage us, as we move into the next phase of reviewing these metrics at a future meeting, that we kind of look at each of these with that eye. Is this data enough for us to make an informed decision with, or is it just a nice-to-know number?
Thank you. And I failed to mention that we have our wonderful analyst from the City Manager's Office, Edna Perez, here, and she is taking active notes, so we will include that in the next session. Thank you.
Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you, Mayor. So the idea is, these will go on a public scorecard, that the public would have access to, I guess, constantly or regularly monitor the progress of how we're doing with these metrics?
Yeah, so the, the software that we procured that will make that dashboard, will send staff, depending on the frequency, will send staff a monthly, quarterly, or annual reminder that they need to go in and update it, and then we'll, that will automatically populate into a public dashboard.
Got it. And then, are there some of these metrics that you guys will, you know, manage or collect data on regardless if it's in the top 20 or not? Because I'm just thinking like, water quality, I'm sure we're measuring that regularly, so if it doesn't get into the top 20, I'm sure we're still going to have data on that, or that data could be made readily available. So I'm just wondering how to look at kind of the metrics that might be readily available versus how we use the 20 that we have to prioritize.
Got it, I understand, yeah. So, and I, I appreciate the questioning of the exercise. So these, first of all, we, we could measure all of them. The 20 is just to help staff really understand where you guys are most curious about focusing efforts for the coming years, but yes, water quality will always be measured per state requirement. So, yeah.
And then probably always made available, too, right? So maybe there's some on here that they're, you know, we'll have either way if we vote on or not, right? Thank you.
Okay.
If I may add, the complete measure for that is meeting all of the state and federal criteria 100% of the times. That is the criteria, and we've been able to meet it.
Excellent. Councilmember Serminho.
Thank you. Since I don't see public art anywhere, I'm going to add it under art, under other number of public art projects. I think it's something that we really need. Thank you.
I'll support you on that. I support you, Councilmember Serminho, on that.
Councilmember Syrup.
Thank you, sorry. And just to be clear, the direction you're looking for here, not formal direction, but in this work session, is for what we see as the ones you want to surface to the public. Is that correct? Is that the kind of feedback you're looking for on each of these slides?
I think it's, it's more just letting you highlight, it is work to track these very detail. We are intending, for any ones that were not put into the survey, sorry, were not, are not in blue, for anything in black or green, staff is prepared to measure all of them.
Okay.
And report them. The ones that you'll see on the next slides that are in blue, we have maybe some questions for you all about. And so, this isn't that we will or won't measure them. This, the exercise here is for you guys to let each other know, kind of what are you most focused on for the coming year.
Got it, okay. And so, to that end, I wasn't sure if this is what you wanted to have be publicly facing, assuming you're collecting all of this. Is this for what we want to be public facing?
This is public face. These things would be public facing, yeah, because they would be in the roadmap.
Got it. So this is what we'd want to be on the red roadmap.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I just wanted, just for the sake of being clear, I think it's important to report on miles of bike lanes added, miles of repaving and sidewalks completed, including the accessibility component, miles of water pipelines and sewer lines replaced, as well as traffic fatalities and serious injuries. Those would be my, my top four in this section. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Great, moving to the next one. So strength in organizational health. There are, again, the ones in black are ones that are continuing from the previous year. We did add customer service data after that was brought up at the Part 1. And then there is a final metric here, employee satisfaction targets. We put this in the staff report. We only measure those every other year, so it would be a data point that would not move very much. So reporting on that publicly without context could be confusing for people, but we did put it here because it was suggested, so.
Councilmember Roach.
Thanks. I think just another process question. So we're sort of making notes here, but are we going to be putting dots up here on our metrics? Okay, so we don't really need to give our votes right now, right? Because we're going to be.
Yeah, you don't need to give your votes. This is more for you to hear from each other. This is your opportunity to talk to one another.
Right, to sort of lobby each other for, but that's not even projects, right? This is just if we think.
This is metrics. We're going to do the same exercise for projects.
But you don't need us to report to you what metrics. Okay, I just wanted to get clear about that. Thank you.
Councilmember Syrup.
Okay, the case, then I would like to take my colleagues here, then. I think allowing our residents to understand what our employee demographics look like, turnover, hires and promotions, and customer survey data, what that data looks like would be important. I think in the Personnel Commission, through the retreat that we had in the restructuring of the commission, the commissioners have really enjoyed getting to understand a bit more about the inner workings of their city government. They've enjoyed understanding, does the makeup of our employee base represent the makeup of our city? How often are people leaving the city? Who tends to leave the city? How often are people joining the city? Who tends to join the city? And I think it just provides us a higher level of transparency to the public around how we operate as an organization. So I just want to throw those out there. And I think customer service, service survey data holds us accountable. If we see these numbers aren't very good, and we're reporting it back to the public, it kind of lights a fire under us to say, "All right, we got to get our act together." So just throwing a bone for those ones.
Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you. In this category, I think all of these are important, but the one that I would say rises to the top for me is the focus on the general fund reserve. We're from the mayor, and I think my other colleagues, there's just a lot of uncertainty with what's happening out of funding coming out of DC. We don't know what's happening with the local economy and potentially planning for a recession. So I really think that it behooves us from, you know, strengthening our organizational health perspective to really focus on ensuring that we reach that 20% general fund reserve. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you. I ditto Councilmember Bonilla's comments regarding the general fund reserve. I wanted to see if it's possible for the new employee experience survey to be combined with the employee satisfaction targets, as well as current employee experience survey, if that's something that can be combined as one. And then also ditto on Councilmember Syrup's comments on customer service data.
Thank you. See you none, see you no more. I just wanted to, I want to agree with Councilmember Bonilla, who agreed with me. And the, you know, that 20%, I think is important for the reserve. It will alleviate a lot of stress in the building. It, it will alleviate a lot of stress in the building if we can see that come back up, and, and, you know, so anyways, I'll just, I'll leave it at that for now, but, okay, I think you can move on.
Great, thank you. So this, the next one is enhance community safety. We did have two additional items brought up in the pre-survey. One was on looking for metrics on emergency preparedness and disaster response drills, specifically, and then one was on crime solve rates. So one caveat we wanted to mention on the crime solve rates is we do collect that data, and staff is always happy to have individual conversations with councilmembers or in the Public Safety Committee. There's a lot of external factors in that data, like are, are witnesses comfortable cooperating? Do we have physical evidence that might affect that? And so providing that number on a website without a lot of context, you know, could lead to some confusion, but that, but we do collect that, and Chief Matthews is always happy to, to talk to council.
Councilmember Roach.
Thanks, yeah, just a quick one, because I just wanted to get at it again, like, to my colleagues, that, remember, what is gonna be most important for the community to hear about when we're looking at these metrics? You know, some of them, I think, will be really interesting for us to hear, but not necessarily from the community, so I just wanted to put that comment out there, thanks.
Councilmember Syrup.
I was actually gonna say, for police incident numbers, types, and response times, that we don't have a problem with that being external facing, right? Because we should be okay with that, okay?
Yeah, that's generalized enough, yeah.
Yep, okay, so just want to highlight that one, and heart response, and I do agree with the add of emergency preparedness and disaster response drills.
Councilmember Syrup.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the police report, the police department's done a good job of publishing incident reports already, right? It's like on a monthly or bimonthly basis? Sorry to summon you all the way up here, I just wanted to know what the current practice currently is, and would it just be a matter of migrating that data onto this dashboard, is my question?
Good evening. So on the incident numbers and types, there's a, a brand-new dashboard that's on our website that the public can access now, and interface with, we had that conversation at our last Public Safety Committee meeting. So a lot of that information is already accessible.
Okay.
But we're happy to, to work with staff to enhance that.
Okay, great, thank you. Would agree with Councilmember Andrews also on heart response calls, fire incidents, numbers, and types, I think is also important. And then, yeah, the more we can start to incorporate metrics around emergency preparedness, and allow that to be informed by the emergency master plan that we're developing, the better. I think it's something that's top of mind for a lot of folks. And I, I hear you on the crime solve rates. I think more reports to council, maybe as a council, as opposed to the public dashboard, would be welcomed, at least by me. Thank you.
Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you, Mayor. I also agree with the emergency preparedness and disaster response drills, just because, you know, I think, and we could even look at this like, you know, block by block, or community, you know, by community, to not just only see what the city is testing and how our emergency response works, but how that's being incorporated into the broader sort of emergency response, block by block, and what we're doing in that space. And then, to Councilmember Roach's point about, you know, kind of keeping the public's interest and view around these metrics, I think metrics around crime solve rates would also be, you know, very important for us to see, because, you know, understanding the type of incidences that are out there, the response time, and those type of things are important, but I think that can also drive up a lot of anxiety, and I think kind of the other part of that story is what a great job we're doing to be able to solve these, so I just wanted to put a plug in for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Zerminio.
Thank you, Mayor, and actually, yes, metrics on emergency preparedness and disaster response drills, and I'm actually going to be participating in one tomorrow, so join me at 5:30, and I'm gonna be dressed like a slop, because I'm gonna be laying on the ground, but it's good practice for our police force. So, see you tomorrow at 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you. And then if there's no other questions, comments, I just wanted to, um, just elevate metric on crime solve rates, and, you know, I, I say that because, you know, every time some, you know, something happens in the community, of course, everyone goes to social media and lashes out, but we do solve crime around here, and I think we need to tell our story, and, so that, you know, it projects, you know, accountability in, in the work that we're doing, so I, I wanted to sort of elevate that. Sure, if you want to comment.
Yeah, sorry, just a comment on that in particular. We're happy to share that information, but as Mary talked about, it is very nuanced, there's certain aspects of it that we have no control over, right? Victim and witness cooperation, you know, the, you know, the preservation and presence of, of specific evidence, et cetera, and there's, there's a difference between generating probable cause and making arrest, and, and beyond a reasonable doubt for the DA to charge, those are different legal standards, and so that's, it's very, it's nuanced, so I think just having some context with the data would be helpful for members of the public.
I think you all do a very good job of doing the press release once you have solved a, a crime, so maybe it's just having it all corralled in one place, and just show, these are the profiles of the, the crime that we've solved, maybe that is a way to do it, since it's already publicly available. I'm sure you already have it, like, on the website, I've seen all the PDFs, but having a spot with all the dashboards, maybe that, that's a way to do it.
That's a great point, thank you for the feedback.
Yes, I agree.
Is there a way to tell residents that when police is investigating something, they cannot say anything about that particular incident? I get a lot of emails and phone, how come you're not telling me, telling us what's happening, where are the police doing? Is there a nice way to let them know that?
Sure, I mean, I think that we're always committed to share what we can when we can, and I think that when you're doing an investigation, maintaining the integrity of the, the investigation is critical to being able to get to a place like solvability, right? If we release information that should be kept confidential for the purpose of being transparent with the public, but now we also haven't finished interviewing witnesses, interviewing offenders, you know, those, those statements can be tainted based on what we released, right? And that's just an example, so we want to make sure that we're not getting ahead of ourselves with the release of information prematurely.
I mean, it should be common, common knowledge, common sense, that you cannot be telling folks what you're investigating, but residents want to know, so they get a mic.
And I don't blame them, you know, I would want to know too, but we're committed to sharing what we can when we can, for sure.
Thank you, and I do agree with my colleague Andrew, you do magnificent, a good job. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Thomas?
Great, thanks so much. So, that was a great conversation, a couple of notes that I wrote down, just to summarize, some of the things we heard was that we definitely want to keep telling the story about how we solve crime, and making sure that we're telling that story, so we'll put our heads together and think about reporting back to you on some ideas, and then similarly, that the emergency preparedness is a big deal, so we'll actually come up with some actual metrics to share with you next time. And moving on to the next slide. Grow the Economy. So this was the one that we had the most feedback from you on the pre-survey, so I'm gonna walk through some of these, these options. So the first four here were, are ones we've done in the past. We can provide sales tax revenue broken down by business type, we do have an external consultant that does track that. We cannot share our sales tax revenue by individual business that is confidential, but by business type. We, we can't exactly get to businesses, how many businesses open, but we can share the number of businesses licensed that are open any given year, and the number of ones that don't get renewed, which would imply that they're no longer open. So, we can share that. We can share unemployment rates, which is not a city-collected item, but we can, if that's something you guys think the public should see on our dashboard, we can put that on there. Metrics around job growth, I talked to staff about what this could look like. Aside from the new business license, this would require a, a study that we'd have to pay for, we don't have any way of getting at that, per se. And then, similarly, metrics that track Hayward residents that are employed in Hayward would require us to commission a study, we don't have a way of getting at that data specifically. And then finally, someone requested metrics on permit timing, timing business openings. We're seeking a little more clarification if that's something you want. We do, we can provide, we can provide some of that data, similarly though, to the crime solve rates, there's a lot of context there that is outside the city's control. So developers might not resubmit, there might be financing reasons on their end that they don't submit, so it's, it's a very nuanced dataset that, if you're interested in telling the story about the projects we are getting going, we can tell that story, but the data might, might be difficult to, to provide without context. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Zerminio.
Thank you, Mary, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mary, for a good job. How about adding, other, a number of absentee owners forced to sell, rent their empty storefront? Is that a good metric? Okay, we need to do something. And I'm thinking off, off a left field, could there be a metric to, for us to find out how many of our residents leak dollars into other cities? Would that be a possibility, if they spend money elsewhere? Is that something that can be done?
I'm gonna defer to our Chief Economic Officer here.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Councilman Paul Nguyen, Chief Economic Development Officer. To your question, Councilmember Zerminio, yes, the city's, the Finance Department's sales tax consultant does and can prepare a generalized report showing sales tax leakage. The sales tax leakage concept, for those that don't know, is a, a rough estimate of consumer demand in a given community, and the amount of dollars that consumer demand represents that is absorbed by communities outside of our community. So if there's a commodity or a good, or like a widget that isn't made or sold in Hayward, people who live in Hayward may go to another community to buy that widget, and that sales tax, that's the sales tax leakage. Those, that data is available, it doesn't change year over year very much, given just the way retail development works. So there's a lot of nuance to that, but yes, the, the report does exist.
Okay, thank you, and keep doing a good job. Keep bringing us more, bring in some more businesses.
Councilmember Andrews.
Oh, I was just going to say yes on sales tax revenue, and yes on the sales leakage, and then if we could just maybe look at maybe our development tracker to look at, I don't want to create a new report, just maybe a tool that we're already using, I don't know if, if it's something that can be done in terms of that quarterly report that we, we receive, and just maybe updating the development tracker in terms of what's happening with permits and the timing, because I think, I think there's some detail, when you look at the development tracker, where it's maybe a little bit more, like, it's in the hands of the developer, they haven't resubmitted, we've submitted this by this time, that kind of stuff, just so we have a better idea of, like, what ball, what court is the ball in?
Councilmember Syrup.
Thanks, Mayor. Agree with sales tax revenue broken down by business type, number of new business licenses opened and non-renewals, I think, the other day I was sitting at the bistro, and three people, all they wanted to talk about is what's opening over there, and what's closing over there, and I saw, that's all they wanted to talk about, and so I think having that metric be public facing, I think, would help address some of that. We also, I know, have our planned development map already that exists, so that might answer some of those questions, too. Metrics on permit timing and business opening, I understand there's a, a need to get clearer about that, I agree with Councilmember Andrews. There's different phases of the permitting process, and I guess what I'm interested in is, you know, applying that lens of, like I said, you know, critical thinking to make this metric make sense for us, and make it actionable, is what is our average time that a permit spends in each of the phases of the permitting process, right? That way, we actually have a metric that we can look at to understand, huh, we're getting caught up for twice as long in this phase and this phase, is that normal, or do we need to make some adjustments to that part of the process? I trust that we've done a lot of work to revamp our permitting process and make it more efficient, people are always gonna complain about it, but I think knowing what those numbers are gives us a place to start, so we know either we're doing something wrong, or they're just complaining for the sake of complaining. I like the idea of being able to track number of empty business storefronts, like, how many empty vacant business opportunities do exist out there? So I'd piggyback on what Councilmember Zerminio was saying. And then economic leakage is interesting, I'm curious if the everyday person would understand that. I do support that as one of the metrics that we do collect, it sounds like it's already being collected, I think just surfacing that for council would be helpful. Don't know if it needs to be in front of the public, but definitely something we should be looking at more regularly, and those are my comments here.
Thank you. Councilmember Roach.
Thanks, yeah, really quick, I think it, it is interesting just talking about metrics, because, for example, like, the first four on this, I think, would be interesting for the Council of Economic Development Committee to be reported to and hear about, I don't think the community would care so much, but if you're looking to do business in Hayward, definitely those three, I think everyone's mentioned, so I would, you know, if we're putting our dots up in the wild, I would encourage my colleagues to stick with the sales tax revenue, I think you could add the sales tax, tax leakage maybe to that data point, as a sort of contrast to our sales tax, the new business licenses, unemployment rates, so I think those are the ones that I would, we'd want to put our, you know, just our, our staff's time into for the public facing. Thanks.
Thank you. I don't see any more hands, but I, I, as, this idea just came to mind right now as everyone was talking, and is there a way to, is there a way to track, and, you know, I know there's a lot of activity coming out of Washington right now regarding the economy, and I was just curious, can we identify, and I, I don't know where here, it might even be embedded in some of this, but can we identify the areas of the city's economy that some of the federal policies are impacting our economy? Whether there's tariffs, whether the, you know, do we have, would there be a way of measuring some of that stuff? Like, like, what would we measure if we're looking at the impacts of, you know, the federal policies on local economies?
There's not a really easy way to look at it.
Yeah.
So when you think about national fiscal and regulatory policy, those have national impacts. A lot of the data that we're looking for, and that staff has put together on this table in terms of metrics, are data that's readily available, publicly available, doesn't require a lot of consultants and analysis, and given the almost day-to-day change of what's happening at the federal level, you know, what we would consult out or ask, subject matter, expect and pay them to do a special analysis, that scope would change, you know, overnight. What, what I would rather direct council to, and members of the community to, is to look at some of the regional datasets that are available through our partners, such as the East Bay Economic Development Alliance, that does an annual East Bay outlook, and that looks at the entire East Bay region, and so it's important to think, when we think about economic development and business relationships, and business-to-business deals, and sales tax revenue, and the movement of goods that drive the economy in Hayward, but also is inherently connected to the entire region of the East Bay and, you know, the peninsula, it's important to think regionally, and so those are the bodies that, that are, it's more appropriate to look at that kind of dataset.
You're, you're absolutely right, because on Monday at ACTC, that was precisely the report that came to us, so, thank you for that, okay, I get it, okay, I appreciate that.
And, but I do think that raises a good point for the public-facing dashboard, is we can, I think, I hadn't thought about that, but we could link to some of those other data sources on a regional level if people want to dive in deeper.
Yeah, that was a very good report, because it, it covered a lot of ground, and, and it was a lot of transportation impacts to it, too, but anyways, all right, go ahead.
Thank you, so moving on to cultivate vibrant neighborhoods, we did, per a survey request, say that we will break down the number of city volunteers by program or event, so you can see where people are volunteering, that's the only update per the survey.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. I was in here looking at my, yeah, go ahead. Thanks. I think we have to continue to surface access Hayward data, it's really important that the community sees how responsive we're being, it's another way we hold ourselves accountable. I'm assuming this means broken down, so when we're looking at dumping graffiti on, yeah, we're breaking, okay, so that's a, a number of. Code enforcement complaints by type and response time, as you mentioned, this came up a lot during our last strategic roadmap conversation. We put a lot of programs on code enforcement, I think it's really important that we surface all the hard work that they're doing. I like that we're adding in broken down by program or event for a number of city volunteers, and then I think library materials checked out, we have to continue to surface the importance of our library. I kind of want to jam participants using library cradle-to-senior programs as part of that, too, just in general, how are folks using the library, and what values are providing for, you know, thousands, if not tens of thousands of our residents is really important to highlight. That's it, thank you.
Councilmember Andrews.
I want to also elevate access Hayward, code enforcement complaints, and disposal days. I, I want more disposal days, but I know we can only do so many, but I think it's
But I think it's been a great asset to our community to say, hey, if you have a bulky item, we have disposal days. It's been a good resource for them, so thanks.
Yes. In fact, I was at the Saturday's disposal day. I got there at 6:45, and I was waiting in line for two blocks. And so it was packed. It was a long, it was a long line out there. Okay, anyone else? Councilmember Goldstein.
Thank you. I like the idea of seeing grants awarded to arts and music, as well as the social services agencies. So not just the grants, but the types of agencies that, that are receiving the kind of funding. Event attendees at city-run and city-sponsored events. In fact, if we can expand that to, like, all events, if there's a way to do that, that's the, that's the wish list. And code enforcement complaints by type and response time and percent of access Hayward resolutions. Thank you.
Okay. See you next, see you no more. I'll move on to the next one.
The next one is housing. We do have a lot, a lot of metrics that we measure. Your housing team measures a lot of data, so they're already measuring a lot of this. There were a couple of, we did add after the Part One, the number of rental inspections completed. So again, speaking towards code enforcement. There were a couple here that were added or were suggested in the pre-survey. One was metrics related to housing conditions during rental inspections. So as was stated in the staff report, this is another nuanced piece. So we can report which, when the inspection is done, is it substandard? However, the range of what substandard means is, could be, you know, like one light's broken to extremely substandard. So there's some nuance there. And in addition, our inspections are, we're not able to inspect the majority of homes every year or rental. So this would be a snapshot of just whatever we were able to inspect, so it shouldn't be extrapolated to the entire universe of rental homes. So there's that caveat with that one. And then the number of evictions and data on why people are evicted, we, we do not currently have that data, so we would need to commission a study if that's something council wanted.
Councilmember Syrah.
Thank you. I think, you know, a lot of the data that housing already collects, like petitions received, people served by foreclosure prevention and eviction prevention services, all kind of feel grouped together to me in the same way that there were some access Hayward metrics. So I would want to advocate for those items to be grouped together. I understand rental inspections completed would be kind of a number without much context, but I think it's helpful for folks to know how many units the city's able to get to, so I support that. People served through city homelessness reduction programs, a percent placed in permanent housing is critical. I think we have to keep that front and center, so folks understand the impact of our programs. I understand the complication around metric related to housing conditions during rental inspections. I'm happy to step away from that one. Number of evictions and data on why people are evicted or have to relocate, if only there was some kind of registry that would track that. And I think those are my comments.
Councilmember Zerminio.
Thank you, Mayor. I really like the affordable homeownership opportunity supported. We want to make sure that we increase our homeownership, so that's good. And whether it's through arena or more affordable living spaces, excellent. And I like the last one also, number of evictions and data as to why people are evicted or have to relocate. That's a very good one. I'm glad somebody added it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Bonia, and then Councilmember Roach.
Thank you. I also agree with the rental inspections completed is a good metric. I was just wondering, where are we tracking, or would it be here, the number of perhaps affordable housing units that are coming online? Is that, because I know this says affordable homeownership opportunities, but, oh, maybe it's here, existing affordable housing projects monitored, supported. Would that be the number of new affordable housing units that are coming online? No. Because I think that would be helpful for our residents, so that they understand sort of the diversified housing that's being created within our city and how it's meeting all of these different income levels.
Good afternoon. So there's a little bit of nuance in the data collection, because the affordable homeownership opportunities supported could include your inclusionary units that come online, it could include units that the city has financially supported, or the opportunities. So we have these different things that staff are working on. It also might be that we support with an application for funding from the state. So we have it listed broadly, so that we could capture all of the work that staff is doing to support the development of the affordable ownership opportunities. And I feel we had another one on, the other one, existing affordable housing projects monitored, supported. I thought we had it broader, that it included both ownership and rental. So it might be something, I'll look into it and see if it should, it should include both, I think.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I would love to see both included. And then I also agree that we need to keep front and center the number of people who are placed in permanent housing, so I'd be supporting that as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Roach.
Yeah, thanks. Again, I think a lot of this is going to be better served being reported to the Housing Committee, but I think a few things that will be interested to renters, I mean, similar to what you guys said, the affordable housing homeownership slash rental, just homeownership opportunity, or affordable opportunities, maybe that's the general way to put it, is probably the right metric for people. And, yeah, I think the rental inspections completed is really interesting for people to understand that this is happening in the city, so maybe that is something good for us to have up there. But everything else, I think, should go to the Housing Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Andrews.
Yeah, I'll just highlight the rental inspections completed. Be interested in that.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
Great. And this is the last one. You guys are doing great at moving quickly, so thank you. These are the same metrics we measured last time, and there was no new suggestions in the pre-survey.
Councilmember Andrews.
I think a lot of people want to know how many trees are planted, so please put that on the website in bold. Big bomb.
That is something that we track, so, yes.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Syrah.
Community-wide greenhouse gas emissions. I think we already collect that data. Just surfacing it helps people understand our climate resilience work, which is a major thing, major source of pride for our city.
Councilmember Andrews.
One more. I, I don't hear a lot about the water conservation programs, even though I know we have it. I serve on BSCA, Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, so just want to make sure we're partnering, partnering with them and taking advantage of their programs. So I'd like to see how many folks are. Oh, I got a thumbs up from Director Mary. All right. Okay, thank you.
And anytime Director Mary gives us a thumbs up, that means we're doing good. Councilmember Roach.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on, like, that will become a very important public measure, I think, because in times of drought, people are really interested in that. Sorry, Director Mary's over there. So interested in finding out what those programs are available. So I would advise all of us to put that as a metric.
Councilmember Syrah.
Sorry, I, just jumping back really quickly to housing, I just want to say, as a renter, affordable homeownership opportunities are not something of interest to me respectfully. There are a very small amount of opportunity compared to the number of folks that might be evicted, for example, or the folks that are dealing with rent reviews. Like, I want to make sure that we're focusing on what's impacting thousands of renters and not maybe what benefits a handful of, like, less than 100, if, if we're lucky in a good year. Thanks.
Okay. Okay. So it seems like champion climate resilience and environmental justice, looks like we're good, and...
Yeah, so at this point, it, we do have a hard presentation, and then we're going to projects, but we will ask you, if you can, to put, Edene is going to give you each 20 stickers to just put your stickers on, so you can all see kind of where you're all landed on this, and we'll take this as additional information. Again, this does not mean that we are including or excluding anything. This is just give staff additional information.
So are we going to take, are we going to take a break while we do this?
Yes. I mean, I guess it's, well, you'll still be here, but do you need to, do you need to take, would you like to also take a break?
So let's do this. Let's take a seven-minute break.
Great. We can, I'll put a slide up saying a seven-minute break, where you can, if you need to use the restroom or something.
Yes. Yes.
Turn the mic off. Just kidding.[1073.33]
We're going to start wrapping back up to our seats. I know Councilwoman Andrews was just wrapping up, but. And I'm going to do it from here because we're playing musical chairs. So we're going to, we're going to resume. Are we good to go? Great. So I, we're playing a little musical chairs, but I did want to move it to the next item, which before we talk about projects this time, we wanted to do a focus topic to talk about a specific project that has been one of the biggest projects of the last four years. And we have Community Services Manager, Amy Cole Blue, and we have Emily Wong, who's the Management Analyst from that, from the Community Services. But we also have Fire and Police here as well to answer questions. Thank you.
All right, we'll jump right in. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So as Mary said, I'm here representing the HART program. I want to be clear upfront that it's an incredibly collaborative effort and the City Manager's Office provides administrative support, which is why we're always the ones talking to you. But we are not the ones doing all of the work and I want to acknowledge that there's a lot of people working really hard to do this program across multiple departments. So I'm going to do a quick overview just to remind everybody about what HART does. HART has two overarching goals. One is to reduce the reliance on emergency services for folks who really need long-term case management and follow-up services. The other is to reduce the need for police officer intervention in calls for service that are involving people who are experiencing chronic mental illness, substance use, disorder, and homelessness. So that's the big overarching umbrella of HART. There are three teams that make up HART. And I keep saying HART, it's the Hayward Evaluation and Response Teams. That's our acronym. Get ready for more. So Hayward Mobile and Evaluation, Mobile Evaluation Team, HMET, is one of the three teams. It's a crisis co-response team. It pairs a trained HPD, Hayward Police Department Officer, with a behavioral health clinician from Alameda County Behavioral Healthcare Services. They respond to calls where someone's in an active mental health crisis. The Mobile Integrated Health Unit, or MEHU, is a fire department community paramedic response. They respond to medical calls where there's also the presence of substance use, mental illness, or homelessness. And then finally, the Case Management and Mental Health Linkages Team, or LINK. That's a team of mobile clinicians who are operating out of the Youth and Family Services Bureau in the Police Department. And they work as like gap finders and gap fillers really. So they connect people with behavioral health needs to long-term resources. We haven't had the chance to talk to you a lot about them, but really they're more than any of the other folks on this team. They have a lot of flexibility in what they can provide community members. So while they are doing like real clinical intervention with folks who need mental health support, they also are like helping people get their cars fixed so they can go to work and not lose their jobs or connecting to animal services to get people who are unhoused care for their pets. So they have a lot of flexibility and they really do a whatever it takes kind of perspective. Here's a high-level recap of our timeline. HART comes out of the Public Safety Innovation Workshops from 2021. HMET was launched first in June of 21, MEHU early in 22, and LINK launched in the early summer of 2023. And then most recently, as part of the strategic roadmap process for this current fiscal year, your council included transitioning HART from a pilot to a permanent city program as a project in the current year's strategic roadmap. So that's where we are right now. We do want to share a few key program highlights, just looking at data from kind of our most recent one-year period that we have data for. Over 469 individuals were served. We know that number is actually a lot higher because it's, it doesn't include county data for HMET. And HMET actually responded to almost half of the 1,800 calls that we received during that time period. We use the county data system and they have been doing a lot of upgrades, which is great, but it means it's not accessible all the time. So we love upgrades and we don't love upgrades. Additionally, there were 734 instances of case management provided to 74 folks during this one-year period. And then if we look at just a recent six-month period, we've seen 105 referrals just from the Police Department to the LINK team. So when we look at those, that really is a strong indicator for us of opportunities where we're taking response out of the hands of the Police Department into the case managers for a more appropriate response to that call for service or for follow-up to a call for service. In terms of program updates, we want to share some of the ways in which staff have responded to council feedback. So way back in December of 2023, this council expressed interest in seeing 24/7 operations of the HART program. 24/7, as we've said before, is challenging for this program. For much of the HART program model is reliant on referrals to other services and those services aren't operating 24/7. But we've taken this feedback seriously and we have kind of brought together some different pieces to still serve folks who are in need primarily of emergency shelter or emergency mental health care services during that time period that isn't necessarily an immediate police response. So these include dedicating four shelter beds at South Hayward Parish to the HART program. So on any given day, if there is somebody who some of the HART team is working with who needs shelter that night, if they get them over to South Hayward Parish by 6:00 and there are fewer than four of them, there's a bed. After 6:00, if we haven't brought somebody over, that bed gets freed up for other folks in the community who need an emergency shelter stay that night. And the goal there, just like with our motel voucher program, which we'll talk about in a sec, is that those folks who get referred are connected with LINK and get that ongoing case management as well as connection to the case management and services provided by South Hayward Parish. The motel voucher program is available so that PD makes a lot of the referrals, but other staff can as well make referrals for eligible individuals and families to short-term motel stays while LINK works on connecting them to other shelter or housing services. And then finally, most recently, we're currently in the process of working on a contract with the 988 Suicide and Crisis Hotline Provider to basically be a messaging services to the LINK phone line in off-hours. So if somebody calls and is in an active crisis, they get a suicide hotline worker who is completely qualified to dispatch the appropriate emergency services or to provide on-the-spot mental health care as appropriate. And if it's somebody who doesn't need an emergency response, they're able to act as LINK's messaging service and connect them to the LINK staff the next day for follow-up. I'm going to briefly turn it over to Emily, who's going to talk more about council's requests around improving our data infrastructure.
So at its current stage, the HART program spans across four different data systems. So that's one data system per team and then the county's data system because we have a partnership with them. Each team has their own specific needs. So it is, they have their own, the way that they run their own operations. There's emergency systems. There are like case management type systems and then the county's mental health systems as well. And with the, within each data system, the HART staff has worked with each team to review their like data collection processes and improve the program's reporting with more frequency. So we're doing that more often and we have better systems in place to be able to clean the data more properly. And the program has also implemented more sophisticated referral systems to the LINK team from both police and fire, which has been especially useful to connect community members during off-hours. And then the HART staff, they're also currently working with HPD's new software, which provides more, more reporting opportunities and features to improve reporting the program's metrics. That's fairly new, so we're working on that. There is potential to streamline data as we refine the program's implementation and data collection processes. So that's where we're at with data. And I'm actually going to pass it off to Chief Volmer to provide an update on the program's most recent adjustments.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to start tonight by just talking about how proud I am of the work that all of our partners have accomplished on this team and during this pilot project. Captain Vickers and the firefighter medics who worked on, on the MEHU and got that whole program going. Dr. Amy Cole Bloom and her Community Service Division team. Dr. Emily Young, Youth and Family Services team. Chief Matthews. The amount of enthusiasm, commitment, and compassion that I have seen committed to this program as a direct response to community outreach, which I fortunately was a part of and was talking to residents over the phone as part of the team that helped develop this. And it's, it's been really inspiring to me. But the goal of any pilot program is to give a good idea a test run, and that's exactly what we've been doing. We learn from what we see. And if you look at the program today, any one of us will tell you it has evolved based upon what we have learned and changing conditions that we meet in the field. We learn what works and what doesn't work. And as with that spirit in mind that I've and taken into account of the financial system, that I personally have recommended after discussion with members of the team that we put a pause right now on the MEHU program. As I said, not easy for me to do, to recommend, but at the same time, I think it is the most responsible thing to do and I will explain a little bit more here in just a minute. But I want to, before I move on with that, I don't want to dwell on the fact right now that, that we will be pausing the MEHU hopefully, or that's my recommendation. That's definitely going to be up to you and your decision. But we still have the HMET and the LINK portions of the HART program that are working very strongly. I have full faith and confidence in the work that they are doing and they are providing excellent service to the community. So with that, I want to say that I think we should pause until we can secure permanent funding to staff the unit. Currently, the staffing model has taken three full-time firefighters off of their assigned rides in the firehouses and put them on this unit. That means not that we have to backfill those positions on the rides that they left at the station so that we can continue to provide our core services. If we were to pause that now with the budget in mind, annually, we would save $1.2 million. So that was a part of, of my decision. Another piece of that is that I think we can act much more efficiently down the road. We talked this evening about our wonderful dispatchers that we would not be able to do our work every day in Fire and Police without them. Once they have full capacity and they're fully staffed and ready to go, we are fully supportive of moving towards an emergency medical dispatch training and, and moving in that direction. That will help us be put out to the calls more appropriately, right? The right unit at the right time for the right call. They'll be better trained to dig down into the details of the caller and find out the best unit to go and the best use of all of our resources. And then the other piece is, is that we need to have the ability to continue talks with the LMSA in order to have the ability to transport to alternate destinations for long-term care. Right now, we don't have the ability to do that and that's something that if we can put those three things together, I think a new staffing model, I think we can reimagine the MEHU team as a kind of a community paramedic team that will still be able to address low-level mental health, chronic mental health incidents out in the streets, substance abuse issues, chronic stuff like that. But we can also expand to do more with the community paramedic program. Just like following up on a patient that the LINK team recommends we can go to do. Or we can follow up with a patient that maybe had a diabetic call a couple of days ago from the fire department. And then that paramedic unit can then go out and hey, check on them and how are you doing? Do you have your medications? That kind of stuff. And I think down the road, we can have a much more cost-effective, efficient program. But I think we need those three things in place. So that was my recommendation for that. If, if you'd like to talk to me about it later or have any other questions, whatever, I can give you some more details. But in, in short, that's where I stand with this.
Thank you, Chief. We've got just one more slide for you to kind of visualize the program costs. I'm going to turn it back over to Emily.
So with the proposed changes that the chief had just mentioned, putting MEHU on pause will save $1.2 million in overtime costs due to its current staffing model. In program costs, you see on this slide, it's reflective of those adjustments. And the total cost of the version, of this version of the program would look like $1.3 million in fiscal 2025, 2026.
And that's all we have for you all on this update. I'll turn it back over to Mary? Or do you want us to facilitate question comments? Okay, cool. I will take your questions and comments.
Thank you. Thank you. And yeah, I, your opening was quite appropriate. The HART program is certainly a, a multi-agency, multi-department, multi-professional interdisciplinary group. And so thank you for putting that together. That was great. Okay, Councilmember Roach.
Thank you. Chief Volmer, I think we probably will have questions for you. I, I wanted to ask, so if you were to pause it for now in order to reimagine it later, will those medical calls still get responded to?
Yes. Every call that the MEHU has responded to will be responded to by one of our current fire companies, whether it be the truck, the squad, or one of our engines.
And, and while you may not be able to transport them to say, South Hayward Parish, you can provide them with the LINK information and bring, can you call LINK out in that moment?
Yes. One of the things that I think we're definitely going to need to do is put some information together for all of our, our fire companies that will have all of the information regarding LINK team and all the different resources that are available for unhoused or people who are having the same type of issues that the, the MEHU team has been going to, so that they're educated on that same process and we can work towards still achieving some of those same goals.
And is it still, I mean, because, you know, as you wanted the MEHU team, you know, we won't have that staffing backlog and overtime. But if like a, like a truck or rig has to go out, is that a more expensive call than a MEHU call? Like what's the cost savings there?
Like I said, the cost savings is in the staffing model that we have right now. One of the first things that I think we would need to do is figure out who we want to staff it and, and have permanent staffing available so that we're not taking somebody from our regular minimum staffing pool and, and taking them off and making sure that we have to refill those spots.
Okay. And maybe this is like a staff-wide thing, but we're still talking about that HMET and the LINK are still funded through other project, right? Other funds at this point.
HMET is, so it's the PD and Behavioral Health. And currently, we staff it out of PD, like their existing staffing. There's no additional staffing costs, although there is sometimes overtime, I think, associated with filling those roles. But not to the degree of the model that MEHU has. And then there's no cost on the behavioral health side. On the LINK side, they're currently limited-term positions that are staffing it. And for the upcoming fiscal year, we have a direct allocation from the state to fund that team.
And then what about the county? And I just saw, I don't know what city it was, and Angela and I were looking at that. It was San Leandro, Alameda, but they're doing this program, but with the county. And so like, and they're getting, I mean, they just got another settlement for some, you know, like addiction services that like was doubled what they thought it was going to be. And then is it their Measure A dollars that they have? What about, I mean, could the county backfill this 1.2 million? And I know like that wouldn't exactly equate. So I think Chief Volmer, your point is to reimagine it with staff. That isn't necessar, yeah, okay. That isn't necessarily, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. I think each jurisdiction is doing things slightly differently. And I would say right now, our partnership with the county is really strong. Like, they are providing the behavioral health clinicians at no cost for that crisis response team. We could look at other models and see. I think that any other model would likely have costs associated with it that we'd have to explore.
And how do our, how do our response numbers on our HEART program compare to neighboring jurisdictions that are doing this work?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't have their numbers.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for this report. So is it, because I'm still trying to kind of rationalize a question that Councilmember Roach had had, which is if there was this dedicated team of like three people that were responding to these calls, FIRE still has to respond anyway, so we're still kind of pulling people out. But is it just that they're not dedicated to that unit the way that they're kind of staffed now?
Yes. So right now, if I'm hearing your question correctly, right now, the MEHOO unit is being staffed with three firefighters who are assigned to that unit. They've been reassigned from their 56-hour work week job where they are assigned to, say, a fire engine or one of our trucks. They've been pulled from there, and now they're on a different assignment. That leaves three holes back where they were originally assigned, and those need to be filled. And those, the way they've been filled is through overtime. Another firefighter who just is getting off that morning, okay, I've signed up for overtime. I'm going to go on that.
How do you see this sort of impacting, I guess, FIRE response and operations generally if now firefighters are going to have to, you know, kind of be stuck at these calls a bit longer because they don't have a way of transferring it to someone, you know, the way that they do now?
It will. I will say that what's happening now, let me give you kind of a number to maybe put some of this into perspective for you a little bit here. In 2023, the MEHOO unit responded to 695 calls for service, right? Of those, 14% of those contacts actually accepted alternative dispositions. Like, they accepted care to go somewhere else or have extra services. The majority of these folks were given things such as clothing, hot meals. They were taken to like South Hayward Parish for a shower, that kind of stuff. All important things, right? But the way that it is being funded now and the cost of it, I just don't see the return on investment for the community. Make no mistake, I'm requesting that we keep the ambulances. I don't want to sell those because I do wholeheartedly believe that there is room and call for a community paramedic program in the city of Hayward when we can reach these milestones that will make it an efficient, cost-effective program. So I'm, like I said, there's a reason I chose the word "pause" instead of "stop," right? But right now, I think that's where we need to look.
Got it. Thank you. And then, I guess, speaking of the pause, how long are we thinking this is going to be on pause for?
You know, it's, I think that's going to have a lot of, a lot of factors that are going to go on. The first is, you know, the first thing that we heard from today was about the economic situation, right? So it's a matter of funding and where we get the funding from. And if we have the, if there's the desire to create these positions to have a community paramedic program. So I can't answer that question honestly. It's a matter of economics and what your decision is. And, you know, that's why we're here with the strategic roadmap, and I'm giving this update to you so you can kind of make a decision as to where we want to go with this program.
That makes sense. My only concern is that, you know, with the pause, how those residents or how those community members are going to get this kind of service. I get that, you know, maybe it may not necessarily be the most effective use of, you know, maybe someone from the fire department, but does it make sense for someone else to fill that void so that we're still providing some sort of service during this interim period versus just kind of turning it off? Because it does seem to be relatively effective. And even if it's, you know, 14% of people who are actually getting care, that's 14% more that may not be getting otherwise. So and then, so basically, this would be a $1.2 million savings, and then we would have to like kind of reinvest in a community paramedic program or kind of this re-envisioned approach later to get us to a point of higher levels of community safety and response.
Yeah, I guess going back, I would envision us probably working through as it is to the end of the fiscal year. I don't know. We could pause it earlier if that was the call that was made. And then at that point, we'll hit the pause. And, you know, I'll start working with the rest of the HEART team to, and the MEHOO staff, and say, where did, where were, what were the strengths of the program? Where did you find frustration in not being able to deliver the service you wanted to deliver? And we can start building up the program that we see will be the best program that we can deliver for Hayward. How long will that take? You know, it just depends on how long it takes for us to find that money.
Yeah, because I mean, I certainly don't see the calls for service in this area decreasing anytime soon, especially with some of the other things that are happening around our community, like with St. Regis and other things potentially coming online. So just thinking about kind of the urgency behind this, too.
It's there, and, you know, you were right on the nose earlier. I mean, it is going to impact our fire crews, you know, for sure. It's doable, right? And I think, like I said, with an education process to make sure that those crews know all of the information that they need to know to make contact with LINK teams and that kind of stuff, you know.
If I may, Councilmember, do you mind if I pick on Dr. Young to speak just a little bit about that education piece and what her team currently has access to and how they're already kind of trying to address that 14%?
Excellent. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to add that I think one of the positive things that's come out of this pilot project is the relationship and the collaboration between the teams. And so the LINK team now has access to ESO, which is the FIRE's database system. And they're able to put referrals directly into ESO that LINK then picks up, and we check it every morning. And so there's an education piece that needs to happen. But you had asked a question about, you know, what's going to happen to these folks who no longer have access to the services? And with this education and continued relationship building with the fire department, hopefully, they should because LINK is the right people to take someone to South Hayward Parish for a shower. You don't need two paramedics and an ambulance, right? You need a social worker, and one is probably plenty. And so we're trying to build it so in this transition, the services don't actually go away. We're just doing it in a more efficient way.
Makes sense. Thank you so much. And, you know, I just really appreciate, you know, your thorough analysis of this program because I think one of the things that agencies have the tendency to do is, you know, not really evaluate the effectiveness of pilot programs. Pilot programs just generally turn into ongoing programs. And I think the work that you've done to really provide this evaluation of the program and then to say, let's take a pause, let's find out what's working, let's find out what's not working, and let's put another product or service out there that really meets the needs better because perhaps this was meeting some of the needs, but not in the most effective way. So I really do appreciate your leadership and even bringing this forward tonight to say, let's look at doing this something a little bit different. So thanks again, Chief.
You're welcome. It is hard because in a way, it feels like we lost, right? We failed. But at the same time, you're right, we didn't because we met the challenge. We worked towards the goal. We learned. We got the information we needed. And I think we're in a better place now, like I said, when the time is right, when we've got all the pieces in place to provide a really exceptional program. You know, hopefully, we get there soon, but we'll see how we can make that go.
Thank you. Councilmember Syrah.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this report, and thank you for, you know, making the tough call to suspend MEHOO temporarily. I'm really excited about this next chapter of HEART, even if it comes with winding down specifically this portion or at least putting a pause on it for the time being. This project was a result of hundreds of people taking to the streets and demanding change in the city. And the city rose to the challenge. And so I just want to acknowledge Dr. Young, the fire department, Chief Matthews, and the HPD team. I think the city responded in a way that was responsive. It came to the table. It brought the community to the table. And I thought we came up with a really unique and interesting solution that has been a role model for cities all across the country. And I think that's something we should take pride in. There was a conversation on homelessness at the Chabot Cinema, and Frank from the fire department was talking with so much praise about this program. And folks were excited to come up to him afterwards and say, how did this happen? How does it work? And so I'm really proud that we're a leader in this space, and we're continuing to adapt and adjust to match our financial needs and also our programmatic needs. It's always better for us to operate efficiently. So thank you to everyone involved in this project. I am curious, just to reiterate more clearly, so these calls that MEHOO is currently responding to, it sounds like LINK is going to be able to pick up the slack on that. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, by the way, we've been talking about it is the fire department is going to continue to respond to these calls as a 911-type call. And a lot of times with a MEHOO call that we've been going, both units will be dispatched. And the MEHOO can relieve the engine earlier and say, no, we've got it from here. And then the engine can go back into service, right? So the difference now will be the engine will be the one primarily responding. They will be the ones on the scene, and they will be the ones who we're going to rely on to make notification and contact with the LINK team.
Okay, understood. Okay. And I mean, I see why we want to call this a pause because is that the best use of our engine time? Is, you know, it doesn't seem like that's the best use of resources. So if we're able to fund community paramedics in the future, that's something I'm definitely interested in. I'm proud that we were able to acquire ambulances at a time where it's very difficult to get that kind of vehicle infrastructure for a city. And so I am curious with something like Measure W, would this apply to a project like this?
I don't know. The conversations around Measure W are still early enough that I think there is lots of opportunity for local advocacy, for our electeds, to lobby the board of supervisors, and if this is something that you're interested in. But what I have heard from Measure W, from the county staff, what they presented to the board, there is not a kind of crisis co-responder model in that pot right now.
Okay.
There's prevention, but I don't think this is going to fit into what they're conceptualizing as prevention.
Okay. If they change their mind, it'd be good for us to be at the table. But, you know, I know a lot of folks are clamoring over those dollars. And then, you know, when we were going out and knocking doors for K-1, one of the things that we put on the flyer was safety net services, right? And I feel like this is one of those things that fell into that category. And as we're starting to rethink what we want to use K-1 for, how we may want to prioritize it primarily for capital projects, given the cost of these projects, I just want to flag, you know, we make room for operational costs already in Measure C. I'm not necessarily saying we have to use some of Measure C or K-1 to help support HEART going forward, but I would hope that this program gets the same consideration as some of the other projects that are currently being funded by C. Or, you know, we decide that we don't want to have any operational costs associated with C or K-1 moving forward. But I do think that we have dollars out here to find a way to fund this, and I hope that we look at these community paramedic positions rigorously. And so, yeah, thank you for this report. Thank you for this hard work around these program upgrades. I like how creative you all were in providing, you know, 24/7 service in unique ways by piecing together South Hayward Parish, the 988 crisis call line, and the motel voucher program. So, yeah, I'm excited to see this next iteration. I'm excited to bring down costs of the HEART program and just appreciate all the hard work and cross-departmental coordination that's gone into this. Thank you.
Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you. Thank you for this very comprehensive report on the program. Really appreciate it. And I wanted to acknowledge all the efforts between the different departments. PD, FIRE, all the consultants, all the behavioral specialists. Just really appreciate you all coming together to figure out a solution. I think you all know what I care about, which is 24/7, and I think you found a really good solution. I really appreciate the 988 connection because that's something that's across the nation and is something that everyone can pick up on. Wanted to see what is the status or review of 211 for some of those other needs that are out there? Because that is 24/7 as well.
211 is 24/7. It's an information and referral, so it's not going to provide any direct services. And so same thing, like with the 24/7, you can get someone on the phone, but you're not going to get a service in response in that moment. And you'll be referred most likely to someone who won't be picking up their phone until normal business hours.
Okay, so it is better still to use LINK for a lot of the services.
Yes. If you're talking to folks about getting off-hours mental health support, you can give them the LINK line. Once we get this contract in place, 988 will be picking that up. You could also really be promoting 988 for folks who are experiencing mental health crises.
That's great. I love hearing that. Also, appreciate the creativity from the fire department. Happy to hear about the ambulances. So if we can figure out a community paramedic program in the future, I think the county should fund our community paramedic program. If they're going to put St. Regis downtown, they need to help us. And we need to be more vocal about the support we're going to need once more of those beds open. And if they have to dip into Measure W to do it, they need to figure it out because I am, I am very concerned about this facility not getting the support it needs and impacting our city, impacting our downtown. Also interested in the hotel vouchers. I would like to see that. Also, for South Hayward Parish, I want to see the results of the working group before we commit to additional beds. I would like to see how that's working, so a report to council before that happens. Thank you.
Councilwoman Goldstein.
Thank you. I'm also very appreciative of the incredible creativity. First of all, in putting all of the different pieces together that made the program possible, but then also your attention to detail and creativity and helping us solve a budget problem and still being able to provide a level of care that we certainly like to see for our residents. Just a couple of questions. You mentioned that there were 695 contacts. And I realize that this is a very nuanced set of questions I'm about to ask. And so forgive me if, for time's sake, I'm just kind of get right to the point. How many of those 695 contacts were repeat?
Here, I've got some information here that will help out with that here. Just a second. So in that 695 calls, we served 314 individuals.
Gotcha. That's great. And the 14% that you said were referred to alternative services, is that 14% of the 314 or of the 695?
That's of the 314. Well, I mean, 619 total calls, or 695 total calls, 314 unique individuals, and the 14% is of the 556 911 responses that we responded to. 78% or 78 individuals, which is 14%, went to an alternative disposition. And that means not only were they offered it, but they accepted it, and we moved them forward. A lot of the times, people do not accept.
Oh, I was going to say, that's actually a pretty remarkably high percentage. I don't know if you know this about me, but I've been volunteering in the homeless community. I coordinated an event called Socks for Souls and been doing that for a number of years now. And so I am kind of familiar with some of the statistics. And that number is actually very high, and that's great. Do we track how many of those 14 later subsequently returned to that inventory of calls for service?
I do not have that kind of information. I don't know. Maybe Emily and the LINK team could get that at some point, but I do not know what happens after that part of it.
Okay. And I don't want to stress you out with more detailed stuff, but what I'm really looking to get after is an overall metric of how we're doing in terms of not just supplying the service, but actually getting people out of their circumstances. And of course, when we're talking about mental health, it is such a broad topic to talk about, so subtly nuanced. Every individual is a unique character, and so you can't just rely on the statistics. But at least it would give us some measurement, if we have it, that, you know, would tell us how we're doing overall in terms of solving the overall problem.
I think you've got a team of folks that have evaluation experience and are clamoring to do a more in-depth evaluation. But we need to, we have been prioritizing getting the program into non-pilot shape. So I think what you're talking about, there's lots of things that we'd like to explore more, like getting access to like emergency hospitalization data, criminalization data. more, like getting access to like emergency hospitalization data, criminalization data, so we can see the folks that like, for example, that the LINK team is working with. Were they involved in the justice system before? Have they continued to be involved in the justice? Like there are bigger questions that we'd love to be able to answer and that takes a lot of work and a lot of time, but it is stuff that we're exploring.
Right, very good. I'm glad you're thinking about that and I know that you are. And then also I just wanted to also bring up a study that was done in Santa Clara County where they talked about what it costs to do nothing versus actually providing the service. And it is more expensive to do nothing because those people, right, who are suffering are going to be either themselves calling for help or have help called on them. And there will be police, fire, ambulance, medical services and so forth versus actually just doing something about it. And the cost difference, I think, was $20,000 a year difference in cost savings. So just something to keep in mind.
If, if you're interested, I do have two individuals that were very high users. We had one individual, the highest 911 utilizer in, in 2022, generated 138 calls for service during that year, 57 unit hours from a fire department, 13 and a half from PD. Ambulance transport total costs, $580,000, 176 ER visits, 502 emergency resources consumed across 158 days.
Wow.
That was an estimated cost between almost $800,000 to $1 million. And the MIHOO's efforts, the number of times that we were able to assess and refer or take care of it without having them transported to the hospital, there was a 25% decrease in ambulance and transports for that patient in 2023. And then we had a second patient that was 418 emergency calls and an estimated $630,000 to $650,000 of basic fees. And that person, we ended up having an 85% decrease in their ambulance transports and emergency room visits. So those were the two highest and that just kind of shows what the program was able to do. So I mean, there is a metric of success for you right there.
Great. And we can use those metrics to go knock on the doors of our partners across the county and the state and say, it's cheaper to do something than it is to do nothing. Thank you.
Can you send us those metrics, please?
Yeah, I'll send. That's a slide program that was put out, so I will, I'll get that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zermenyo.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you very much. Very good report. I'm somewhat saddened that we need to pause to get back into it. Very happy that we actually came up with the program as colleague Syrup stated, it became something that was copied by other cities. So it was thinking outside the box and it was something that was needed, especially from residents who kept saying, you're not doing anything with the homeless. What are you guys doing? You're not doing anything. So the, the positives outweigh this negative of pausing a program until we make sure that we can finance it. And of course, I'm very happy with the $1.3 million less in expenses, so.
I mean, if the idea is to like quickly, if we can get our claws in some of the county money before it's too late, like maybe it could happen quickly. And then the final thing is you said, like, do you pause now or do you pause later? It sounds like you've got consensus on the council, so I know we're not voting on anything tonight, but if that's a staff decision, seems like the sooner we're doing that, I mean, it's a shame because we're going to lose that service, but the sooner we're doing that, we're saving money, we're, you know, when it comes to the whole point about this isn't being a cost-effective way to do it through the fire department. So I'll leave that up to, I know we're not voting on it, but just wanted to like reiterate that.
Councilmember Syrup.
Sorry, I just have to give a shout out to the Hayward Community Coalition. I'd be remiss not to for helping bring this project to life and I would be burnt alive if I didn't give them a shout out. So thank you to all the organizers that put in a ton of work to work with the city to make this program possible. And I hope that we all continue to remain at the table to help inform the next iteration of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Cole Bloom. And I had a small sidebar with Ms. Thomas. And this next round, we're going to go, we're going to, we're going to ratchet up and we're going to go.
We're going fast.
We're going to go faster. We're not in a rush. We want to take our time, but we want to go fast.
Great. I'll do my best. And so we're, we're going to do the same, and thank you to all the staff here, same activity we did for the metrics, but for special projects. I think that, I'm, I'm glad you were able to dive deep into one project because that gives you a sense, not all projects are as, as, as in-depth as that is, but it, it gives you a sense of how much staff time goes into each of these projects. So I'm not going to read through every single thing that was added. In the survey, what I will mention is that if we, if anything is in blue, that means it was suggested in the pre-survey, that would be a new staff effort and we would need to really consider what else could come off the plate or if it can be absorbed and we have limited resources. So I'm going to, with that, move on. So this is our investment in infrastructure projects. I'm not going to read through these. The green are the ones that were added after the Part 1 session. And I think in the interest of time, Mayor, really just focusing on if, if there's any things people want to really highlight and then you'll be, have an opportunity to vote.
Perfect. Councilmember Andrews.
Yes, I wanted to see where does the public art impact fee fit? Did I miss it?
That is in neighborhood, cultivate neighborhoods.
Okay, so wanted to also see for other, Maintenance has done an excellent job at public art in crosswalks. They're my most popular post on Instagram, just so you all know. But wanted to know if that can be something that we can add as other.
For additional crosswalks?
Either invest in addition, in high visibility crosswalks because we're trying to also improve traffic and pedestrian safety.
Yeah, so I think, if you guys want to add it as other for sure, what would happen, the next step would be, we would have to go back and look at cost and bring that to you as part of the next iteration. There's no guarantee that we can do it just because.
Yeah, just whenever there's like a crosswalk upgrade, if we can add that as a added scope, if that's possible. So I'm going to add that as other. And then also wanted to look at implement the interdepartmental assessment of access Hayward to enhance effectiveness and increase transparency. Is there also an opportunity to review that program against 311? Because I know that was a referral I worked on with other council members four years ago and just want to give you an update of how many cities have implemented 311 for access Hayward type things. Carson, San Leandro, San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose, Sacramento, New York City, San Antonio, Los Angeles, Birmingham, Nashville, Cleveland, Austin, and Little Rock. So I don't see why we can't look at it either. So can we revisit 311?
Yeah, so I'm seeing, yes. You've moved to organizational health, just so everyone can follow along, but yes, yeah, we can definitely include that in the assessment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Syrup.
Thank you, Mayor. Just being fast here, my top choices, of course, begin construction of La Vista Park. As we know, construction's getting more expensive. I think we got to move on to things that we can move on. I also want to maybe amend, begin construction of Stacks Center Phase 2. I want to see if we can push Phase 2 and 3 together because that'll bring down the overall cost of the project. I would much rather do them at the same time than do 2, wait for 3 to get more expensive and then pay for 3. That also brings a resource for our community much faster. And again, it's a shovel-ready project, so I think the faster we can move on this, the more long-term savings we can realize. Along those lines, evaluate capital needs and long-range spending plan for K-1. I think those kind of go hand in hand. I would say it's for all the projects, not just the public safety building and the corporation yard, but everything that was presented earlier tonight. On the topic of high visibility crosswalks, I think safety enhancements for the loop is a reoccurring issue with residents. I was just asked yesterday at a dinner, so what's going on with the loop? I know we just secured a $4 million grant, if I'm not mistaken. I think prioritizing that coming up with a plan because it's going to be a longer-term project, the sooner the better. I'm biased because I live close to B Street. I'd like to see that improved, but if that falls off, that falls off. I'll put the loop over that. And then implementation for the bench, a bench for every bus stop project. I want to, again, thank councilmembers Zermenyo for joining me in that. We've seen really good results with these bus stops. I'm sure many of you have seen folks sitting on them. For me, this is a racial equity issue. A majority of our bus riders are folks of color, primarily low income, many have disabilities. This allows people to utilize public transit, which is the number one way we combat climate change with dignity. And so this is a relatively low-cost project. Every bench only costs $2,000, labor included. I would hope we could continue this to encourage alternative forms of transit and get cars off of our roads. So those are my, my go-tos for this one. And the last thing I want to say is explore land swap opportunities. I feel like this could be merged with Grow the Economy Number 3, which says, provide a report on the economic development potential and feasibility of city-owned parcels. And so I would be supportive of that as a subset of Grow the Economy. I wouldn't necessarily include that in investment in infrastructure. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you. I also agree with beginning the constructions of La Vista Park. I also like adding Phase 3 to the Stack Center Phase 2. And then my other two are around Tennyson, enhancing safety for Tennyson Road and then also prioritizing lighting. I think that, you know, when you look at Mission Boulevard or other economic corridors or kind of vibrant corridors, multimodal corridors within Hayward, you know, we have done a lot of lighting improvements, especially down Mission and in Fairway Park and in other areas. So I would really like to see that prioritized for Tennyson as well, especially considering how much activity and how activated that space is. So whatever we can do to make it more safe, and I actually think that lighting is part of making it more safe, so maybe there's a way of combining those two, but just really asking my colleagues to prioritize that. Thank you.
Councilmember Roach.
Thank you. I just press this again. So some of this stuff we're already doing, right? Like evaluate the capital needs for the long-range plan for Measure K-1. I assume we're having to do that already. Right, so whether we prioritize that or not, that work is going to happen. Is that right?
Exactly. So the point, this is an, the opportunity, possibly one-time opportunity for you guys to share with one another where, what kind of your top goals are. But if you agree with all of these, there's no actual blue, there's no blue colored ones here, so these are all ones that staff have agreed that we can move forward with. But it is helpful for us to still understand what your top priorities are when you do the dot voting.
Great. And then the last thing I wanted to ask is about the, the construction of Stack Center Phase 2 and 3 with the library spaces, because this went back to a previous question. You know, I just wanted to be clear about the library spaces and maybe I can bring up Director Adelman to just say about, that this isn't actually a library in the Stack Center. Is that right? I just wanted us to know what we're talking about here because when we're looking at the Measure K-1 for a new library versus, you know, and trying to somehow supplement it with this, that that's not actually what that is.
That's correct. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Roach. The Stack Center library is just a satellite. It's a, it's basically a room which will have homework center, homework help and ESL classes. So it's not a library as such. And I, I do want to also say, just that tiny little place is $8 million from, that we got from the state and then more. So just to give you a sense of the cost of building.
So it's not going to have like other robust services or, or supplies or, you know, books or anything like that?
No, not at all. We might, you know, if we have, like, find that there's space, we might put a shelf in with some books, but it is not going to be a regular branch in any way, not even what we provide, excuse me, on Kirby or on the bookmobiles.
So it's really not a supplement for what's happening down at Weeks at all?
No.
Okay, it's really just another community room to?
That's, that's why we call it a satellite because it'll be just a very specific service delivery at that place.
Okay, and you already have grant, like grant money secured for that space?
Well, you know, and Mary Thomas worked on this. We did get the, when Governor Newsom put, he put almost half, over half a billion dollars into building of libraries, so it was the Building Forward project. And so we did get about eight and a half million dollars from that.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to be clear about that, since we're talking about the Weeks library, that this really isn't some sort of substitute in the same area.
No, not at all.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Uh, thank you. That's my questions.
Okay, you may proceed.
Next, next one. This was, I'm not going to, you guys have seen the staff report. I'm not going to show this for more longer than that section. Organizational health would be the next one. The only one here in blue was a suggestion from the pre-survey to add an assessment around that staff have what they need to thrive in their workplace. So I will.
Councilmember Andrews.
I already made my comment earlier. Thanks.
Councilmember Syrup.
Just reiterating, support for fall and mid-year budget reviews. I like the idea of, you know, basically making this almost a quarterly practice just so we can really stay on top of our financial discipline as we enter a potential recession. Wanted to echo Councilmember Andrews' comments around interdarp, interdepartmental assessment of access Hayward, supporting implementing a language access plan. I know this is something that has been in progress for a while. I just think it's important. We are one of the most diverse cities in the entire country. Language access, I think, should be front of mind, top of mind for us. And then, of course, a citywide compensation philosophy. I think it's just good for us to constantly revisit that and make sure everything is above board and is consistent. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. You may proceed. Oh, Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you. For all the stated reasons, I also support the budget, mid-year review, a fall review, and then strategies to advance our physical solvency. And then I also really support developing a compensation philosophy. I think we owe it to everybody in the city and we owe it to ourselves to make sure that we have a solid, you know, framework and methodology for how it is compensation, you know, is determined across the city. So thank you.
I did want to just highlight, you know, formalize the city's internship, fellowship program to develop undergraduate and graduate student cohorts. I know that the city attorney's office has been the point of contact, or sort of the, the point on that. And if his office has the capacity and bandwidth to continue it, I'd sure love to have the city attorney's office usher that through for sure. Okay, see, oh, yeah.
I just want to comment, because one of the options was adding an assessment to make sure we're living up to the statement that city staff have what they need to thrive. And I think this may or may not be an evolution of a suggestion, maybe during the strategic roadmap process one or two years ago, to implement some level of 360-degree evaluations. But I think I just, I don't want to give any formal language here. I just want to maybe encourage, and I can write this in as others, I just would like for us to have a healthier evaluation of process across departments so we have a better understanding. And this might be beneficial to the city manager's office, too. It came up before in the past. It kind of fell off into the back burner, but I think it's important for us to have good performance metrics across the board that, you know, go in every direction. Thanks.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, next one. I'm going to, I'm going to just go, go to questions now. I think you all have the rhythm, so.
Okay, are you, are you on, I'm just looking at my slide. Are you at enhanced community safety?
Enhanced community safety, yeah.
All right. Councilmember Andrews.
Yes, on the assessment of the police department by voting districts, also update and train on the community resilience plan.
Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you. So the, the first one around developing, you know, a pathway to swiftly reinstate the school resource officer program, I wanted to kind of talk about that for a minute because I'm not sure that it's the kind of traditional or the formal, former school resource officer program. I think what I was looking for here is really a partnership with HUSD to look at how we evolve student safety on and off campus together. Rather that mean, you know, we look at the school resource officer program as one method of doing that. Maybe there's other creative ideas that come up. I know that I've heard from members of the community that, you know, support some sort of reimagined SRO-type program. I've also heard some concerns about, you know, having, I guess, like, you know, guns back on campus. So I just feel like there's an opportunity for the two agencies to come together and to have purposeful dialogue around how it is we work better together to improve, you know, safety on and off our campuses. Because we know a lot of the issues that, you know, tend to start in our neighborhoods, bleed onto campuses, issues on campuses bleed back into our neighborhoods. So I think that this is an issue that we have to, you know, really take seriously as a community, especially as we talk about being an education city. It's hard for us to stand behind that when our kids don't feel safe at school. And I think it's a shared accountability and a responsibility between the school district and between us and between other local agencies to really figure out what the best plan is to make sure that our students are safe. So that's really what I'm looking for, for the first one, you know, developing pathways to improve safety, you know, in some sort of collaborative way with the school district and then bringing back recommendations and proposal to, you know, both council and to the school district board of trustees on what's possible in this space. And I hope that my colleagues will, you know, support that as well. We also talked about, or another, you know, priority of mine is updating and training on the community resiliency plan with the goal of, you know, being a model for emergency preparedness across the nation. We're known, not just across the nation, but across the world for having the Hayward Fault right here in Hayward. It's one of the most studied faults in the world. We know what's going to happen, and we have some pretty tight scientific predictions of what the impacts are going to be when that fault does slip. And to have all of that data out there, we have to take action on it. And I think looking at how we build resiliency, not just for earthquakes and not just for fires, but for the multiplicity of hazards and threats our community faces is prudent. And I think doing so, keeping voting districts in mind, is a very unique approach to this. I also support the organizational assessment of the police department to look at how we continue to optimize service levels and how we also could potentially align maybe some of our community resiliency work with, you know, this transition to perhaps voting district alignment with police department operations. So I really like that. The organizational assessment of the fire department, I think, is also really prudent. I mean, there's just so many important things here. And then the last thing that I would say is, you know, in addition to dispatch, which I think you've, you've heard all of us support enhancements there, really looking at how we double down on the safety and security within our own four walls, which is our library. You know, I know that our security guards at the library are kind of going above and beyond their calls of duty to make sure that the patriots and the community members that are in the library are safe. So being more intentional about making sure that we do have a safety and security plan for the library that's aligned with local partners is also something that's very important to me and I think to my colleagues up here. So those are my comments for this section. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Syrup?
Thank you, Mayor. I would agree with the way that Councilmember Bonilla is approaching the question of school resource officers. I don't necessarily think that program and the way I see it, that product, is relevant to the school board trustees at the moment, and they've, they've made that very clear. However, there needs to be a relationship between the city and the school board, and the school district. And I would like for us to be a point on helping facilitate those conversations, especially as we try to move education city forward. I know some conversations have been facilitated, facilitated before, but I think us being very intentional in saying, "Look, student safety is an issue here. This impacts schools. This impacts students leaving schools. It impacts our kids' safeties when they go home after school. We need to figure out what does this relationship look like and how can we improve it?" I think to ignore the problem would be a mistake. So I'm supportive of us having these conversations around student safety, not necessarily the way it's worded here, where we say we reinstate this program. Also agree with updating the city's community resilience plan. Again, earthquakes and wildfires continue to be top of mind, especially as we move into a district model. A lot of District One is in the hills, and I am concerned, because community members up there are losing their fire insurance policies, which is a sign that nothing good is coming our way. Using the organizational assessment of the police department, I understand shifting something like police beats is a major undertaking, so I recognize that could be a project in and of itself for an entire year. I know there were multiple recommendations from that assessment, so I'd also like to understand at some point, as a full council, what were some of those assessments? I know it may have come to the public safety committee already, but it would be good for all of us to know, as one of our top issues in the city, you know, what do we see as the highest priority? And it sounds like analyzing the police beats is one of, one of those places to start, but it would be us and the community to kind of have a larger conversation about that. I'm happy that we had a conversation around the HART program. It sounds like this will be a continuing project, so I won't belabor that any further. And then I was the person that added, collaborating with East Bay, or Cal State Hayward, for the folks online, don't get mad at me, to open Harter Road as a throughway for residents in the Highlands. I saw the staff response, saying that this is an emergency outlet, and we already have access to it. But I think what I'm suggesting is, we hear a lot of complaints about traffic on Mission, and this could be a release valve. If, instead of always being closed and only for emergencies, Cal State East Bay has a reduction in enrollment, there's not a lot of students on the campus at the moment, would it be the worst thing in the world to open it up through, through, for, through traffic, so cars could actually exit Mission earlier rather than stay on Mission and have to go all the way to Carlos B? Just an idea. I'm spitballing, but I wanted to throw that out there, because that would be an additional road to relieve traffic and be an emergency exit route as well. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Roach?
Thanks. I just wanted to say on that first one, if, you know, if there is some interest in, you know, Hayward and the school district working together on what student safety looks like, both off and on campus, do you want to reword, I mean, so if we're going to be given dots, like, I don't want to vote on the way the wording is of this first one, but if you want to give some wording that we either cross out, you cross out up there so that it's clear, because, you know, the swiftly reinstate SROs, I think we're, we're saying that we know that's not our jurisdiction. But either put it under, do you want, you want to somehow, like, pathway to, I mean, anyway, I'll leave it to you, because you're the one that suggested that. Is that, so, thank you.
So, and we're also taking notes tonight. So what I think I'm going to do is ask, I'll go up and write as amended, and then we have notes on what the amendments would be, and we'll keep working with you on that. So we'll just write as amended, and you could put your dots next to that.
Thank you. That's great. I also wanted to add on that one, that, you know, maybe H-LAC is a good first conversation, because, and maybe we invite, maybe, you know, the chief to come to, to that committee, because that is already a natural monthly, or was it quarterly, meeting between the school district and, and the city. So maybe that's a good first place to start and bring in the police department for that one. Thanks.
Councilmember Semenya?
Thank you. On, on that number one, that's where I would, that would be my preference, to leave that discussion to this committee that meets on a quarterly basis, and not have it necessarily be one of our projects. I do, I, the police department assessment is excellent, and then the implement enhancement for the dispatch center are also very good. And up there in the trend, the city's community resilience plans, those are my top three. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goldstein?
Thank you. Yep. I'll be quick. So yes, update and train on the city's community resilience plan. I do want to continue to look at police beats and aligning them, but I think that's already underway. I mean, I am in favor of enhancements to the dispatch center. They've, apparently, they've, they have a need for it. I'll leave it at that. The SRO question, CSO SROs, I think we just need to continue that conversation and align with them, be in partnership with them. And in terms of the code enforcement, you know, after a quake, rebuilding and repairing, we actually need to have streamlined processes, and the time to do that is when it's not a disaster. And I would say that that, whatever steps that we take in that regard, need, need to be part of our resiliency plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't see any other hands. And I just, I did want to just emphasize, and I wanted to thank Councilmember Bonilla for elevating the SRO program issue. You know, just a couple of points on this. At the last public safety committee, the data spoke for itself. I mean, I think that, you know, all you have to do is, you know, go back, download the PowerPoint, look at the data. There's, there's, you know, there is an argument to be made to, to bring back a school resource officer type of program. And I also want to emphasize and sort of repeat, one of the things we talked about in the public safety committee meeting was, you know, I think one of the first steps we're going to have to do, this is a complex issue, a complex issue, but I think we're going to have to first talk about what is an SRO program. And we're going to have to talk about what does it look like, what are the different models, and, and so forth. There's still a lot of, you know, reaction when you say the words SRO. And, and I think this will give us an opportunity as a community, as a city, to, to talk about that, and talk about not only safety, but talk about safety at schools. I also, just for the, you know, just for data's sake, I don't hold me to the specific amount of data, or the specific accuracy of the data, but if you look at the population of our city that is under the age of 18 years old, you know, the population is a high population. Probably a third of our city is under the age of 18 years old. And, and we have a lot of young families that send their kids and expect safe places. And, and so this is a conversation that I think we all need to have. We need to have a conversation with the, with the school board and, and with the superintendent. One of the directions that was given to myself and to the city manager in the last public safety committee meeting was, we would bring this issue up, introduce this issue to our monthly meeting with the superintendent and the president of the school board. So the, the next meeting we have with the superintendent and with the president of the school board, the city manager and I will bring this up. I also want to just say this for those that are listening. I had a conversation yesterday with the superintendent, Chin Wu Fernandez, and, you know, and the, you know, the relationship between the city and the, and the, and the school district, it is a good relationship. We have a very good working relationship. I've known the superintendent for a very long time. She is a smart superintendent. She is a very thoughtful superintendent. And, and I believe with this superintendent and with the school board trustees we have right now, I think, and with us here, I think we can come up with a strategy, with a model. There's a lot of models out there that can get us to where we need to get to. And so I just, I just wanted to make that point. Also, I just wanted to emphasize the HART program. I appreciated the presentation from our fire chief, Olmer, on that. And, and so it looks like we have found a solution to sort of move forward, and, which is good. And I think, I think that's all I have to say about that, and then we'll move on.
So for Grow the Economy, you can see here the projects, and then there was a survey, a request for a report on the pros and cons of data centers. We, staff is willing, aside from the roadmap, to commit to providing a short memo before the end of the fiscal year on that.
Thanks. Yeah, I just, I added that, just because, to me, like, that's a potential source of, you know, funding for the city. But, you know, I think these are, data centers are going in all over the place, and I think Director Mary and I have talked a little bit about it. So if that's something that needs to come, too, I don't know, the sustainability committee or the economic development committee, that's fine. I mean, it would be great to get that information, but I want us all to be aware of what, what it means, like, even though it might be great revenue for the city, there's, there potentially are drawbacks, and, you know, we've talked about it. And I just think we should all get that information. Thank you.
Councilmember Syrup?
Thank you. I think we did a prioritization as a council, if I'm not mistaken, around maybe economic development priorities slash code enforcement priorities, I'm trying to remember. But the topic of bringing commercial zoning ordinance amendments to remove barriers for businesses, allow pop-ups, and allow appropriate commercial uses in residential districts was one of the higher-scoring ones, if I'm not mistaken. So I would like to see us continue momentum on that. It's one of the ways we activate some of our neighborhoods, make them more walkable. It's actually a climate change strategy, which sounds kind of bizarre to say, but it is. I want us to continue to provide a report on the economic development potential and feasibility of city-owned parcels as we explore selling or leasing certain parcels. And something I wanted to add here, too, that I think didn't get, quite make it in, was parking enforcement. So I'm going to touch the third rail here. I know some folks might be upset at hearing this, but it's been a request of some of my colleagues on the council that we have more of a security presence downtown, and it's been difficult for us to staff that. I believe Director Mary commissioned a parking enforcement study back in 2018? Okay. And what we learned was, if we implement some kind of parking enforcement program, we actually create a cost recovery system that can fund a presence downtown. So it's a way for us to bring in some additional revenue for the city, but primarily cover the cost of downtown security and a presence and eyes in a very popular place where people are serving businesses. And the other benefit is, it brings more business, because right now, people can park all day in front of a business and take up a spot that should belong to a customer. And I've had several small business owners come up to me and say, "Hey, can we implement some kind of parking enforcement program so that customers use our parking spots, not just folks parking all day for whatever reason?" We have a theater parking lot with a third floor that is very underutilized. We have the Lucky's with a third, a second floor that's very underutilized, and sometimes a site for, you know, unsavory behavior. So I would like us to get creative around what parking enforcement in the downtown looks like, and I think there's a lot of downstream benefits that could come from that. And that'll be it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Bonilla?
Thank you. I agree with activating Cinema Place as such an anchor for downtown. I also agree with bringing the commercial zoning ordinance amendments. One of the things I was wondering, and I'm not sure if it's going to be so popular with some of my colleagues, but is this where we would potentially reevaluate the cannabis tax ordinance in the city? Would it fall under this category?
I think it depends on what you plan to do with it.
Because I'm, I'm just wondering if it's still the right one-size-fits-all ordinance for the city. Like, when you look at how other cities are taxing cannabis, I'm not sure that, you know, Hayward's doing it the same way. And then when we talk about, like, sales leakage and other things like that, I mean, I know that we don't like talking about that in, you know, relationship to marijuana, but I mean, it is a retail...
And this would be the appropriate priority to put it under, then, in that case? So we could write it in as an other.
Okay. So that is something that, you know, I would, I would like my colleagues to consider, is potentially just, you know, commissioning some sort of evaluation of our cannabis tax ordinance to make sure that it still makes sense, and to make sure that we're not leaving money on the table, especially considering some of the, you know, economics that our city is facing. And then the, the other two are the economic development of, or the economic potential of city-owned parcels, you know, looking at selling or leasing those. And then the last comment, I agree with Councilmember Syrup, looking at some sort of broad parking, you know, plan for the downtown. Parking enforcement could be one element of it, but, you know, really just a broader parking plan for how it is we're leveraging and utilizing our parking lots in downtown. And that's it for me on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Andrews?
Thank you. I wanted to see if we can just combine some of these, so that Activate Cinema Place provide a report for potential selling or leasing of parcels, if that is something that we can just combine those two. Yes, on bringing commercial zoning ordinance amendments for removing barriers for businesses. The parking, there was a lively discussion regarding economic, in the economic development committee regarding parking. I would like to see the parking study that was already done and see what was the recommendations from that. Also concerned about charging for parking when there's no anchor for me to pay for parking. Like, we don't have the, the big business to attract me to pay for downtown parking right now. So I would like to see the strategy of, what are the businesses that are going to demand for me to pay for parking before we implement that? And yes, I was also interested in partnerships with the hub for the Stack Center, and maybe is there a partnership, or can we combine Chabot, Cal State East Bay with the Stack Center? If this can be just one thing versus having it separate? That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. I don't see anybody. I, I just wanted to, I, we did have a lively conversation about this and the economic development about parking. And, and I have to agree, you know, right now, we just don't have, well, we just don't have what it is for people to pay parking to come to downtown and, yeah, so I, I'm still, I'm still, that is a third rail, by the way. That's a third, and I, and I know, I do know there's one other person in the city of Hayward that is watching the parking, parking issue. But anyways, okay. Next slide.
So this one, Cultivate Vibrant Neighborhoods. You can see that there are one, two, three, four. There were five projects brought up in the survey. I won't read through them, and...
Okay. Okay, keep doing them. Next slide. No, I'm kidding. Yeah, Councilor.
Thank you. I feel like explore joint-use agreements with HART and HUSD has been on here as long as I've been on council, and, you know, my hope would be that H-LAC would be able to make some progress on here, but we would be able to, you know, double the amount of park space we have for residents and amenities we have for residents if we could just figure this out. So I don't want us to take the foot off of that, but I recognize it's hard to coordinate different jurisdictions. I think we should combine, continue, the third bullet point, continue to engage owners of vacant commercial properties to encourage activation, with the, uh, blue bullet points is update our vacant building ordinance to compel owners to activate their buildings. I'm not interested in, um, the continual engagement at this point. I'm interested in the compelling. So, you know, what tools do we have at our disposal? I know that for a while, I was floating the idea of a commercial and residential vacancy tax, however, that's currently held up at the California Supreme Court level. So we have to get creative in other directions because I don't wanna see our downtown and other corridors become a ghost town because folks refuse to rent out perfectly usable buildings. So that's just a comment from my colleagues. I think we're pretty aligned on that. And then, um, yeah, of course, I'm gonna be supportive of developing a pathway to sustainably fund the Hayward People's Budget. I wonder who wrote that one? Maybe this can be housed under growing upon the Special Events Program, but just as an example, we had 5,000 residents attend the South Hayward Market last year as a People's Budget project. We handed out thousands of dollars of free produce to folks in the community, and now we're partnering with Eden Youth to hold 12 events this year again. There's a parent that was able to do ESL tutoring as a result, and now they have a contract with HUSD to provide hundreds of students with bilingual tutoring. This is a incubation and job creation engine. This is a community, uh, event creation engine. There's a community garden and Hazel Garden that's managed by the Neighborhood Association now that was funded by the People's Budget. So I don't think we know exactly how we're going to fund this, but what I'm interested in is can we start to think of a plan? Last time this came before the Budget and Finance Committee, the recommendation is maybe we do this in three-year cycles versus on an annual basis, and how do we minimize the staff impact? So my appeal and my, my hope is if you would support this, that we can figure out how we do this sustainably to continue to activate the community, because the city doesn't have to do everything. If we empower our residents to do it, they can take a, a dollar and stretch it very far, as we've seen with just a fraction of, um, of the dollars we typically spend on some of the contracts that we approved tonight. Uh, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Councilmember Roach? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Andrews, I think, Councilmember Roach?
Um, I'm gonna speed this up, cause I know it's getting late, but I will say that the, one I'm interested in is present language for possible public arts ordinance. This was a referral we all approved over a year ago, so just wanna see if we can actually get it done, um, pretty soon. And then, uh, interested in engaging owners of, of, for the commercial properties, whatever that looks like that is feasible, is what I'm, I'm interested in seeing. And then, um, uh, let's see, I wanted to also, uh, develop a strategy to increase funding for Community Services Arc, but I'm really more interested in seeing how we can make connections, stronger connections to our nonprofits and businesses to support them getting more funding. So, um, I, I understand in the future, when the funding becomes available, but maybe there's a strategy to look at our business partners to provide the funding that they requested, help them fill, fill the gaps that was requested. Thanks.
Councilmember Roach?
Thanks, yeah, on the, um, the joint agreements between HART and HUSD, I do have a little more hope about H-LAC this year because we have an expert in park districts now as our representative from the city, and we have a member from HART that's on the board that is so familiar with H, with the city and HART now. So I think there's some good synergy on that committee, that maybe there's some hope there, that we can sort of leave it to H-LAC for now and not put it any further on, on staff to, um, to add this to staff time right now. Um, I would, City Manager, would you agree with me on that one, that maybe that's the better place to put that right now? Even though that's obviously gonna take staff time from City Manager's office, but as an H-LAC project?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. And then on, um, on the Hayward People's Budget, so was that, is that not, is there no budget in the current general fund for the Hayward? There isn't, okay, cause that, so we do have to have further discussions about that?
It was a one-time.
It was a one-time thing, okay. And then the other thing, the community services funding, I mean, I did speak to that the other day, I would like to see us increase that amount, but given our budget constraints right now for both of these, I think I'd wanna hit this maybe at the mid-year or even the fall to see, I mean, cause they're not large sums, and they do go to these great, you know, projects, you know, as, as we heard from Councilmember Syrup, including, we heard the other night, in community services. But given our budget constraints, I don't, I wouldn't wanna commit to it right now, I'd wanna wait and see where we are. And then whatever there is, you know, that we sort of agree to allocate those funds at that time, so that's where I am as far as prioritizing those. Thank you.
Okay, next slide.
We have two more, so. And this one's for housing, there's a few new projects this year, and then a couple of recommendations from the survey at the bottom.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes, on engaging Alameda County stakeholder to secure Measure W dollars to support response to homelessness in Hayward. Also, wanted to explain, review retail at the bottom of residential. I know there's some conversations about TODs right now, uh, but just more of just really looking at residential projects and seeing if that's the best layout for our community. And I think we're seeing projects that don't necessarily have retail at the bottom actually work out better for certain locations, so, um, I don't know if that's something that needs to be specifically in housing, but more in, in giving our staff more leverage in terms of designing something for our community that works for the neighborhood, so, yeah, that's all.
Councilmember Roach?
Uh, thank, yeah, thank you. I mean, I, I mean, these, these all look great. I, I am really interested in the St. Regis development, that that includes a very, very clear safety plan for the, um, for the site and the community. I know, um, that, that is something I think everyone should be, you know, sort of really focused on, given its location to downtown. I know the library should be involved, and, um, and, you know, our police department should be involved in what their safety plan looks like. So I'm really interested in us, um, you know, adding that part about ensuring that we have a good safety plan there. Um, and then on the rent registry one, I mean, I, for me, I'm sort of confused, cause it's been voted out of committee, and it's, it's adjourned, I, I think later in June, so I think that one is already on, on a path to, um, to discussion, right? So whether we add this or not, we're already on a train to do that. Is that right?
Um, I, I mean, I will, it was not currently, it was not on the roadmap as we sent it, and so the, the request here is to add it. So yes, I think it is-
I guess it seems like it's almost out of this process already, because we have a work session pending.
So there's a work session pending.
Yeah, okay, so that's, that's all I wanted to say there, that whether we prioritize this or not, we're already gonna be hearing it.
Yeah, you'll hear it, and you'll hear sort of the analysis about it, and then the staff can, or-
Right, cause then, right, cause I would want more information anyway before I made, yeah, okay, thank you. That's all.
Uh, Councilmember Syrup?
Thank you. Um, first, I just wanna say that I think, and, you know, this was one of the questions I was asked earlier, but I've just been trying to chew on my answer, that the header for this doesn't feel relevant to me anymore. Preserve, Protect, and Produce Housing For All. And I think my issue with that is that there's this emphasis on housing for all, there's not an emphasis on ending homelessness, there's not an emphasis on people being displaced and reducing the people that are being displaced, there's this emphasis on the, the object. And of course, we need housing too, and so maybe there's something we add there. But I just wanted to throw out there that I feel like the title of this section is really obscuring what the problem looks like and the, the impact we're trying to have on the problem, which is homelessness and people being displaced, um, which is why we're focused on housing and preserve, protecting, and producing. But when we focus only on the housing, we lose sight of the kinds of policies as well that I think help keep people housed. And so, you know, when you look at this list of items on here, I want us to remember that in our most recent resident satisfaction survey, not the one that we don't have data for just yet, that was just commissioned, but the one in 2023, the number one issue was cost of living. And then it was homelessness, and then, of course, it was public safety, and of course, there's a large intersection between all three of those things. But when half of our city is renting, and we're trying to address an affordability crisis, and I'm looking at this list, and I'm not seeing things that are directly addressing that outside of the registry and potentially revisiting how to strengthen our rent stabilization ordinance, I have to ask us as a city, what are we actually doing to address the needs of half of our residents, a quarter of which are rent burdened, and potentially a paycheck away of being, from being on the streets themselves? So I know we've done a lot, I'm not saying that we're not doing a lot of work already, but I wanna be clear, we're making a strategic plan, right? We're looking forward, how are we looking forward in addressing half of our residents, a quarter of which are rent burdened? So, of course, I support this development and the safe integration of St. Regis, um, but to me, I found it odd when the rent registry fell off of this proposed list, and I've already addressed this with staff, so this is not to throw staff under the bus, um, because we worked very hard to get this onto the strategic roadmap, uh, last year, and I wanna make sure that we see this through. So I, I just, I really want us to keep our eye on the ball, because in order for us to address this housing crisis, we need the data, and, uh, I'm, you know, this isn't about me or my ego, this is about looking out for the tools that we need to actually address this crisis, and it's a tool that's popular in cities, uh, all across the country. Lastly, I just wanna say, retail at the bottom, bottom of residential, I'm supportive of. I think this is a project that actually belongs under economic development more than it belongs under, uh, Preserve, Protect, and Produce Housing For All. And of course, I support working to secure any county dollars we can find to address both homelessness programs, uh, and, uh, any programs that help keep people in their current homes, cause that's prevention. Prevention is the most cost-effective, and I, and I think we need to continue to invest in tools that help with prevention. Thank you.
I was just gonna say, I'm supportive of moving retail, review retail at the bottom of residential as part of economic development instead of housing, if we need to move something, but that's fine.
Thank you. I won't repeat Councilmember Syrup's points, but I fully and wholeheartedly agree with the comments that he made around us needing to ensure that we are also prioritizing protections for renters, considering how big of a population that is in Hayward. Um, I'm also happy to see that there is a path and that the rental registry and, you know, discussions around strengthening our rent stabilization ordinance will come back to the council regardless of, you know, kind of voting on it tonight. Um, so I'm happy that that kind of moved through the committee. But as it relates to these projects, um, you know, I think providing a report on the housing development potential and feasibility for city-owned parcels is something I'm very interested in. I actually worked pretty hard on Measure W when I was with, uh, the, the Leadership Board of Everyone Home, and I know that there's a lot of money coming in for that, so we really do need to be advocating for that money, and not just staff, but I kind of wanna see a multifaceted approach for how we collectively, including, you know, us as electeds, um, you know, leverage and, you know, leverage our seats and how we engage with the county when they're making these decisions too, cause I think, you know, with Supervisor Marquez and others, we can start to lobby some of the supervisors as it relates to this money, cause it's a lot of money that's gonna be coming to cities in Alameda County. Um, and those are my comments for, for that. And of course, St. Regis is something that we talk about all the time, and we need to make sure that we have a safety plan, and I kind of just want to understand that whole project a, a lot more, and the engagement and coordination with the neighborhoods. So, thank you so much.
Uh, Councilmember Goldstein?
Yeah, thank you. Yep. Um, we'd definitely like to see, um, a report on the potential feasibility of city-owned parcels, uh, the Measure W dollars and, uh, uh, support development of and ensure safe community integration of the St. Regis campus. I'm not convinced that we, so, I agree that we need to address the needs of Hayward renters. I'm not convinced that a $3 million rental registry is the price tag that we wanna put. I think there's more effective, less expensive ways to do that, so I'm looking forward to that discussion that we're gonna have, uh, uh, coming up. Um, the, and then, of course, Activate the St. Regis Behavioral Health Campus. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to, uh, talk about real quick the, uh, city-owned parcels, identifying, identified in the city's housing element, and, you know, I wanna be very, very careful, um, up here when we start identifying, uh, city-owned parcels, um, because I don't know how many city-owned parcels exist. Um, and, and, and I, I say that because I, sometimes I feel when we say city-owned parcels, we talk about them like we have all these parcels littered all over the city that all we need to do is identify them and, and sell them. I don't think that's the case. Secondly, I also wanna be very careful on walking down a conversation around what do we do when we sell those parcels? Uh, I am in not, I am not in support of selling city-owned parcels for our budget, right? One-time funds to fix a one-time problem, or, you know, there is another city in the, in Alameda County that sold a coliseum, right? They let go of an entire asset for a one-time budget stopgap. And, um, and so, you know, I wanna raise the flag here and say, um, while we look at this issue, uh, we need to be very, very careful on how we frame this and, and, and the message that we project to the community, because, um, I don't want us to start talking about, you know, these parcels that may or may not exist, and all we need to do is sell them so that we can, you know, uh, you know, pay for things that we may not have money for right now. Secondly, um, you know, we had a very long, lengthy conversation about the rental registry on, uh, at the, in the Housing and Homelessness and Resource Committee. I did not support it, and I didn't support it primarily because, um, it was a lot of money. Uh, and if we were to do this, we're gonna have to take money from somewhere else, plain and simple. And, um, uh, that was the first, that was the first issue. The second issue is, um, it was, you know, I look at all of the resources that what, I look at all of the resources that we have been, uh, investing in protecting renters, uh, in, uh, you know, um, supplementing rents, uh, with protecting tenants, I mean, all of the work that we have been doing, I think we have done some really good work. And, um, could there be more? Absolutely. I'm sure there is. But, you know, the, the, uh, the investment that it would take to get this off the ground, um, in this point, given that we're, you know, about to end the MEHU unit, the money that would take, uh, to build this infrastructure, this, you know, um, this database, we could put it in MEHU and, um, and, and give that life for another couple of years. And so, you know, we, you know, we really need to think about how we, um, uh, talk about resource allocation and how we do this, but, and, you know, I'm, um, so anyways, all, all in my comments right there.
Comments?
Yeah.
I just wanna correct some information. The cost of the registry would come from a rent stabilization ordinance, so this would not touch our general fund. There's a half position that might, and that's a discussion we have to have as a council, so I don't wanna sell any false promises here, but there's a way to pay for this without touching our general fund. The goal of protecting folks through a registry is to prevent people from needing service from MEHU. MEHU is incredibly expensive. I don't want people on the streets, I want them in their homes. I don't want MEU- A dream for us is to have nobody for MEHU to service. That's us doing our job. That's the vision, right? Everybody's in a home, nobody needs a, needs MEHU to answer it. And so, when we're talking earlier in this conversation about investing $250 million into a new building, and we're saying, well, we can't spare $3 million for the number one issue in our city, which is the cost of living, it's just, I'm puzzled. And so I, I really encourage us to really wrestle with what that means when we say investing and addressing our residents' needs here. Of course, we're doing stuff. We're doing stuff for public safety right now, but we still think it's worthwhile to deepen that investment. We're doing stuff for housing right now, but we can still deepen that investment. So this is, this is a drop in the bucket, and I just don't want to, uh, I, you know, respectfully, I just don't wanna end on what I think is, is misportraying how this would be funded and the impact this would have relative to other projects that we're investing in.
And, and I think what we talked about in the committee is how it would be funded is through raising the fees for landlords, and-
And, and tenants. And I would-
And, and on tenants.
And as a renter, I would happily pay that fee if it prevented me and my neighbors from being evicted illegally.
Yeah.
I think, I just wanna say, we're gonna have a work session on this, everyone's gonna get the data, gonna get input, and we're all trying to get home right now. Thank you.
Okay. Um, anyone else on this? Next slide.
Last slide. Uh, this is, uh, Champion Climate Resiliency and Environmental Justice, and I will-
Councilmember Andrews?
Uh, just wanna continue the work on the citywide tree inventory, and, um, I would like to just have an update at some point on hospital partners in the Shoreline Master Plan. I don't think we need to necessarily put a vote towards it, but since you all are working so hard on it, but just what are the, I know there were some grants you received from SF Bay Estuary, but seeing if you can get more, and seeing what the results of it are, like, what are they now? Thanks.
Councilmember Syrup?
Um, I want us to move forward with implementing the bike distribution program, and I wanna acknowledge the mayor's efforts on the, uh, Alameda County Transportation Commission helping secure those funds. Uh, I also think providing a report on the feasibility and a path forward to preserve SkyWest's open space is a discussion we just have to have. I know that there is a plan currently, uh, to develop portions of it, but we have more attendance at our airport meetings than we do for council meetings, and there is just over, I mean, there's a petition with like 300-plus signatures now, of folks begging to keep it in open space. And of course, I understand there's a cost for us to maintain it, but in the past, we've leased out that land, it's adjacent to some East Bay Regional Park land that maybe they can support us in, uh, taking over, but, uh, as far as community outcry goes, I mean, we're hearing loud and clear, please keep this in open space, and I would just really appreciate if we could put that conversation to rest, so that's, that's why I put that there. And then, um, I was also the person that added, uh, working with HUSD to drive adoption of free bus passes through ACTC. Maybe this could be an H-LAC project, uh, but ACTC does offer free bus passes to our HUSD middle school and high school students, and I think if there's a way for us to drive that adoption, it's another way for us to encourage kids to engage with the local economy and get some cars off the road. Um, so I just wanna give a shout out there, and, uh, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Um, bicycles. I'll just put a plug in for the bicycles. Um, okay. Okay. I think that's it.
Great. So I, there is no, there's no item on the agenda after this work session, there's no council announcements. So an option right now is either that we go to the voting or that you end the meeting and you do the voting kind of after the meeting to release staff. Your choice, Mayor. Or I don't know, unless city manager.
Are there final comments from city manager?
Yes, just very quickly, you do have to do your ranking while we're still in session.
Oh, okay.
We cannot adjourn.
Oh, okay.
But I appreciate the conversations. I listen very deeply, and we have opportunities because there are a couple of items that are coming forward as part of council referrals. So we anticipate some of the items bringing to you in the month of June and May.
Okay, so give us five minutes and we'll do, or seven minutes. All right, let's go.
We have said vetnet voters, school boards.
Yeah, well, especially if you, you know, you're doing what you're working.
Yeah, you know, I just, I just have to let someone that works.
Yeah, that one's, that one's.
I don't understand why we're even involved in this, but I don't, just get.
Well, I'm on ACTC. I just have to, I just have to, I can, I can do that.
Yeah, we have to get involved.
No.
It's a, it's a grant that, that, that ACTC gives, and not all city districts get it. There was a thing.
It's gonna be a good thing.